Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Select Board Meeting. We are meeting in a hybrid fashion this evening with four of us here in person, and Joe Mignani joining us remotely via Zoom. We are just coming in from executive session, and so we're going to call the open meeting to order at seven oh two. We are being recorded and broadcast by WACA TV this evening. And I would ask that anyone from the audience that would like to participate via Zoom to please use the raise hand function if you would wish to speak. And so we will, are we admitting people to the, are we all set? Okay, so we are admitting people to the, to the meeting via Zoom. If there's anyone here for citizens' participation.
We want to adjust the view on that TV so we can see everybody because right now we're looking at ourselves.
Yeah, that might be a good idea.
Paul, can you, is it? Paul, can you do that, adjust the view on the TV that we're looking at?
So we can see everybody?
There we go.
Oh, there we go. Okay, great, thank you. So if there's anyone here for citizens' participation that would like to speak this evening, please go ahead and use the raise hand function. I am not seeing anyone this evening. So we are going to go ahead and move on in our agenda. Our first scheduled appointment tonight is at seven thirty, so we will go ahead and move on in our agenda. We're going to go down to old new business, item B, which is discuss changing the date of the April fifth Select Board Meeting. So Joe had, was looking at the calendar of our, of our meetings, and we typically, we typically meet the first and third Wednesday of every month. And so April fifth falls under, falls on the, the first night of Passover. And so typically, we do, we do move meetings that, that fall on, on holidays. So we wanted to go ahead and discuss potentially moving, moving the date of that meeting. We haven't talked about any potential alternative dates, so I'll open it up to the board for, for thoughts.
Potentially either the day before or the following week, right? Is that what we're thinking?
Well, I would, I would say the week before because that March is a long, right? Aren't we meeting March first and March fifteenth?
We are.
So then we have two weeks we're not meeting unless we meet on the twenty-ninth, right?
So do it the twenty-ninth instead of the fifth.
Well, that's one alternative, yeah.
And then we'd have two weeks before the meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah, then there's that two-week gap for the nineteenth.
So, so that might put us a little bit in, in a, that's not going to put us in a bind, but just something you have to be aware of. So we typically close the warrant that first meeting in April. Now, we can wait and do that on the nineteenth. That still meets the statutory requirements.
I mean, I'm available before and after that day, or the before, we want to do it the Friday, maybe, but.
Question? Because typically, our first meeting in May is town meeting, right? So May third will be town meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
So, gonna throw something crazy out there. If we go from the fifth and move it to March twenty-ninth and then meet the twelfth and the twenty-sixth in April and give ourselves an extra meeting if we need it? Because we won't have a, a Select Board Meeting in May on the first week in May.
So, okay, so wait.
Take our meeting from the fifth and move it to the twenty-ninth. Then do a meeting on the twelfth and then a meeting on the twenty-sixth if we need it, and then town meeting on the sixth, or the third, whatever that date is. So I'm basically giving us an extra meeting.
So we would still meet on the nineteenth?
No, we'd meet on the, the twenty-ninth, the twelfth, and the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth if necessary?
If necessary. Thoughts?
That works for me.
Fine, sure, that works.
I mean.
Because we'll meet, we may meet the week before town meeting, which could be helpful.
If we need it.
I wasn't going to be able to be here for the nineteenth anyway because it's school vacation week, so that works out.
That was my anniversary, so I'm like, okay, you don't have to meet. I mean, I'd be here if we need to, but, okay.
Joe, Joe, what are your thoughts?
No, it's fine, it works for me.
Okay, okay, so I like, I like that solution.
Okay, so we've got the twenty-ninth, the twelfth, and the twenty-sixth if necessary.
Yep.
Okay, that works.
It works.
All right, so could I get a motion to?
I move that we cancel, well, we adjust our meeting on April fifth and on April nineteenth, and we will meet on March twenty-ninth, April twelfth, and April twenty-sixth, the twenty-sixth if we need it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
Greaves' eye.
Mitchell, eye.
Chair, eye.
Mignani, eye.
And Kinsman, eye, that passes five zero, okay.
Madam Chair, as, before you move on, Jim Ne from MWR TA is here with us now. I don't think there's any reason not to start his part of the, the presentation.
Okay, all right, we can definitely do that, do that a little in advance. Thank you for, for, for joining us a little early, Jim, this is great. So we have this evening an update from Jim Ne, who's the new administrator at the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. Jim, I know that Steve has met you, but I think you are a new face to, to most of us. So first of all, welcome and thanks for joining us tonight. And I'm happy to turn over the, the floor to you to kind of introduce yourself and to provide an update and tell us everything that's going on with the, the MWR TA.
Absolutely, well, it's a pleasure to be here. I just want to double check first, everyone can hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Perfect, awesome. Well, my face might be new to everyone here, but thankfully, Ashland is not new to me. I actually spent a few years living in Hopkinton and commuting to the Ashland commuter rail station every day. So even well before taking over this role, I was definitely familiar with the area and familiar with Ashland in particular. Great community, it's a pleasure to be serving here in Metro West and helping out people of Ashland. Myself, I've been in transportation for about twenty years. I started off as a driver at UMass Transit Services. Quickly got promoted up to supervisor and manager, and I worked for the private firm First Transit for a few years. I've also worked for other nonprofits such as the University of Maryland ran their shuttle system. And most recently, before taking over Metro West, I was the head of transportation for a nonprofit in Boston in the Longwood Medical Area called Masco formerly. Actually, right around the time I left, they changed their name, so if you look them up now, they're called the Longwood Collective. It's a brand-new name that they have, and I was there for seven years. And I've been here at Metro West for the past six months. The first six months, the staff and the communities have been very gracious, very helpful. It's been wonderful getting to know the system and getting to know the team. Obviously, there is a wide range of programs that the Metro West Transit Authority provides, different services in different communities based on individual needs. Many of the programs that we provide are regional in nature and they're interoperative, and they kind of work together. Often, those types of programs are things like fixed route or ADA paratransit. And then some of our programs are a little bit more community-specific, where we might have like Dial-A-Ride in Ashland, but maybe not every community has signed up for Dial-A-Ride. So it's been wonderful getting to know not only the teams and the systems, but also how the organization runs and making sure that the organization is healthy going into the future. So that's a little bit about me. I do have a slight or a short slide deck that I'd be happy to share with some updates from the MWR TA. Is that possible? Would you like that?
Sure.
Let me see if I can do that for you, Jim.
We'll have to, we're doing some technology things on our end, so you can share your screen.
Well, while we're setting that up, Jim, if you could, and I don't know if your slide deck is, this will be part of your slide deck, but if you could spend some time speaking specifically about the micro-transit concept and, you know, how the MWR TA is, is involved with that and how Ashland may benefit from a program like that?
Absolutely, that, that is part of my slide deck a little bit here. Can everyone see that screen now?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to share a little bit of data. I shared this at the most recent advisory board meeting. This is an example of some of the data and metrics that we track. This is just a, a regionalized look at some of our ridership from the month of September. And then if we wanted to look at Q four and boardings kind of in the Ashland area, this is in particular on the Route Five. These are the locations and the numbers of people who boarded during Q four of this past year. Honestly, don't want to go into a whole bunch of detail on route planning or those numbers right now. I just wanted to kind of share some of the metrics and some of the data that we do track and the level to which that we are paying attention, not only to individual routes, but to individual communities and individual locations, you know? Even down to, if we zoom in, we can actually look like, does the person board on this side of the street or that side of the street at this corner or that corner? You can get really minute detail on that, and that's a big part of our evaluations of our programs. Another thing I wanted to touch on, this wasn't necessarily one of the things that I was asked to talk about, but it is a topic that comes up frequently, so I wanted to make sure I touched on it briefly. MWR TA fairs have been suspended throughout the entirety of COVID. And during that same time, there was a decision to upgrade our technology package that we use for collecting fares. That technology package was delayed, like many things were, due to supply chain issues of key components. That supply chain issue was solved a few months ago, and all the hardware has been acquired and installed. The software training and public material pieces are still under development. We were hoping to launch fares restarting in January. It does look like we're pushing that a little bit. We're probably going to be into late February or early March before those start. The good news is we applied for, in the fall of this year, and were awarded a grant to offset lost revenues from fares from Mastop. So we're quite happy about that, that offset our fares in the months of December and January. So that was, we were very happy about that. As a reminder, when it comes to fare policy, the amount of fares and whether, whether or not we're collecting those fares, those are decisions made by the advisory board. So when it comes to questions about fare free and where we might be going in the future, while we're not collecting fares today, our policy is not a fare-free policy. This is really just related to an update to the system that's been ongoing for some time now, and we're looking to complete that update. If there were to be any discussions of fare free or different types of things, like you might have heard on the national news or even the state news, those decisions would be decided at the advisory board level. So I just want to make sure everyone was updated on that. One of the things I was asked to talk about a little bit was MWR TA goals and my own personal goals. So for FY twenty-three, obviously, really big shoes to fill. Ed Carr was a pillar of this institution since the founding. And getting up to speed and making sure that I can support the organization at the same level he did, that's definitely my, my number-one goal. Maintaining the workforce and expanding the driver pool is also obviously a very important goal. As we all know, workforce shortages are kind of across the board, not just in a single industry. Though, commercial drivers in particular is a workforce that's been hit quite hard. The, the numbers vary depending on who you use for statistics, but the number of commercial operators that the United States is short right now is somewhere in the ballpark of one to two million. And in the state of Massachusetts, we're short somewhere in the ballpark of forty to sixty thousand commercial operators, meaning that if you trained and got CDL permits and then licenses for every man, woman, and child in the city of Framingham, that might be enough to cover the shortage in our state alone. So we are doing quite well. We, unlike some of our sister RTAs, we have missed very little service recently. Some RTAs in the area have actually had quite a bit of service disruptions due to workforce shortages. We've had, I don't want to say we haven't had any, but we've had very minimal, and we've been able to maintain most of our service levels. Obviously, a goal of maintaining our current FY twenty-three budget while developing next year's budget. And one of the things I've been working on very closely with the team here is developing competitive federal and state grant applications. There are a number of very, very important capital grant programs that are not part of the normal formula funding. They're competitive programs through some of the infrastructure bills that were passed over the last several years. So these are not necessarily one-time money, but they are limited programs with limited years of application, sort of in the four- to five-year range. So we're making sure that we're striking while the iron's hot. We want to make sure that our transportation system has the best capital that's possible. So we're, we're head for, headfirst into that. We're also working very closely with other RTAs and at the state level to expand our RTA state funding. The pool for RTAs in general at the state level, we're looking to expand that. But the MWR TA in particular, our share of RTA funding as the newest RTA in the state, most of them were formed in the nineteen seventies, we were formed, obviously, in two thousand and seven. Our share of that funding is, well, to put it bluntly, I, I wish it was a higher percentage, and based on most metrics, we probably should be. So we're going to be working to fix that ratio, but also expand the pie for all of the RTAs, and that's something that we're working very closely on. And then we're also hoping to procure our first electric vehicle this year. It'll be a Ford electric van that'll be deployed into our service, and we believe we'll be taking delivery of that hopefully before the end of this fiscal year in June. When we look into FY twenty-four and beyond, obviously, we want to assure that riders in our communities are at the center of all of our decisions and making sure that we provide the best service possible. Also, we want to make sure that as, as in this year, but in future years, we want to make sure we stabilize long-term funding and to assure that the health of the organization is long-term. Also, a very key critical component is maintaining a state of good repair, both on facilities and vehicles. And we want to continue the energy transition. As many of you may know, but maybe not everyone, we currently operate with CNG and gasoline vehicles. Most RTAs operate with diesel and gasoline with a handful of electric vehicles mixed in. We're going to be phasing out over time, assuming that it's feasible and that it works with our, our demand structure and our, our fleet needs. We're going to be phasing out gas hopefully, so it will be CNG and electric. CNG pollutes a whole lot less than diesel. So having that as part of our energy transition plan for the next several years, that's an important part of what we do.
Sorry, what's CNG?
I also want to, oh, yeah.
Natural gas.
Oh, yeah, compressed natural gas, sorry. I sometimes talk in transit lingo, and I apologize. If there's any questions about any of the stuff I'm saying, feel free to pepper me with those. I, I'm trying to go quick so I don't take up too much of the time here. We're also looking to expand our current, current facility to allow all maintenance functions to be conducted on-site. Currently, most of our maintenance functions are conducted on-site, but body shop and painting is not done on-site. So we're looking to make sure that we can bring all maintenance functions in-house. Obviously, safety and security is of paramount importance, so we're looking to expand and improve upon our safety and security at the facility and on our routes and in our communities. We also want to evaluate our vehicles and our routes to make sure they align with industry best practices. One of the things that many of you probably noticed is that we operate vans primarily. And even on our fixed routes, where we're using cut vans, larger cut vans, they're not city-style buses, and they have limited capacity. Our highest-capacity vehicle is right around sixteen passengers. Most RTAs and the MBTA and most transit organizations have at least some part of their fleet that are larger-capacity vehicles. Some of the brands are called like New Flyer and Gillig, and they typically hold between forty and sixty passengers each. What that means is with one driver, one fuel bill, one capital bill, you can carry three times the number of people, so the efficiency of the service that you're providing is that much more. Now, larger vehicles don't make sense on every route, and we wouldn't necessarily deploy them on every route, and they might not make sense in Ashland. But if it, we don't have any in our fleet, then we can't necessarily consider them for certain routes to where it might make sense. So we're going to be making sure that we align with best practices over time. And then we want to look at our workforce and our workplace policies and make sure that the MWR TA is one of the most competitive places to work. We want to make sure that we retain the best talent to deliver the best service to your town. And to touch on Catch Connect, it's one of our service types. It's kind of a hybrid in between demand response and fixed route. Fixed route is your standard public transit form of transportation that most people think of when they think of buses, serving bus stops, going from point to point at fixed times, picking people up and dropping people off. Demand response is inclusive of programs like Dial-A-Ride and ADA paratransit. ADA paratransit is a form of picking people up and dropping them off based on where your fixed routes go, but if those people are unable to ride the fixed route bus for one reason or another, and they're qualified under, under the ADA law, then we would pick them up and drop them off to make sure that it's complimentary to the fixed route for them. So it's called complimentary paratransit services. Catch Connect is sort of a demand response service. It's run in a van, and it does do point-to-point, much like a demand response, a Dial-A-Ride or an ADA trip. But it's open to the general public, there's no qualification for it. You can download an application, have it on your phone. It operates a lot like Uber and Lyft. If Catch Connect is operating in your town, assuming that you're during the operating hours, you know, in Wellesley right now, we're operating it during Monday through Friday. It runs from about six thirty AM to six thirty PM. So if you try to get it at midnight, you know, you might actually call Uber and Lyft instead of us because we're not operating at midnight. But if you called, call or use the app during those hours, it, it's open to the general public. And this is sort of an example of what the screen might look like on your phone if you're using the app. And as you can see, it, it is pretty similar to Uber and Lyft. You can drop pins on the map, you can enter addresses. And it's, it's quite the interesting service. Because it's open to the general public, it's the type of service that doesn't necessarily make sense everywhere. With a service like this, it's sort of a Goldilocks service. It, it, you can't have too much and you can't have too little ridership within a community for the Catch Connect to make sense. If you have too little, then the drivers are going to be assigned there, and they're not going to have any rides, anyone to pick up, and then they're going to be inefficient, and it's a service that's essentially wasted if the drivers aren't picking anyone up all day. If you have too many riders, it also doesn't work because then the riders are being asked to go too many places. And now, unlike Uber and Lyft, you can flex drivers in from anywhere. If they normally say have ten drivers in a town, if there was a big event or there's a big demand, they could flex drivers in from other towns. We unfortunately will have set resources anywhere where we do Catch Connect, so we couldn't go from, say, four drivers in a community to twelve drivers in a community just because there was an event or something like that. So if there's high demand, too many riders, then the wait times become increasingly long, and it wouldn't make sense, so you'd want a fixed route in that case. The one thing that we really like about Catch Connect is where we're piloting it right now, and all the programs we're running with Catch Connect right now are pilots, we're also collecting data. So we're able to collect passenger data on our fixed routes that tell us where people board and where they alight, but we don't necessarily understand the connection between point A and point B because the information onboard doesn't actually track the person. It just tracks people coming in and out of the door. With our demand response service and Catch Connect in particular, we know who's, who's booking. They, they book from, you know, their home or from the grocery store, and we know where they want to go to. So what this tells us is what's the demand for public transit in a given area? So we're able to collect fantastic data, and even if the pilot isn't something we want to do long-term, we then have this very large data set that tells us, well, where should the fixed route go? Where, where did people actually want to go who are taking public transit? And now, instead of hiring a consultant to maybe do surveys, and who knows how accurate that survey might be, we actually have data from the riders themselves who are willing to take public transit telling us, oh, this is where I want to go to and from. So even in the event that Catch Connect isn't a program that's long-term viable in the different places where we're piloting it, at the very least, it's going to provide invaluable data. So we definitely like the, the programs that we're operating from those perspectives. And some of the programs we're operating right now are quite, they're quite interesting, and they've been, they've been very well-received. So that's about all I have to say at this point. I hope I didn't go too fast, and I hope I didn't say too many things that were confusing. Here's some of our contact information, including some of the social media information as well as our website. And with that, I will stop sharing, and I will answer any and all questions, any and all comers I am happy to talk to.
Okay, sounds good. Steve, you want to go ahead?
So, Jim, on the, on the Catch Connect, a couple of things. Number one, where are the, I know Wellesley is one of your pilot locations. Where else are you piloting the program? And also, what, what are the, what's the fare structure for, for Catch Connect? I'm assuming it's competitive with Uber and Lyft at this point?
It is not. Because we're public transit, the fare structure is, it's based on sort of a fare that's more consistent with fixed route or demand response. So that fare right now is set at two dollars. Again, we're not collecting it currently until we can collect fares on all modes. It, it's not really equitable to collect on one mode but not the other, unless we made a policy later on and said, oh, yeah, we won't collect on this mode, but we, if it was legal to do that, maybe we'd consider it, but again, that's an advisory board decision. But the fare is two dollars per trip, and once we have fares operational, again, that's what would be charged per trip. And the pilots, as, as you mentioned, they're running in Wellesley Monday through Friday. We currently have a pilot in Hudson on Saturdays only currently. And then we're going to be starting up a pilot in March or April of this year in Hudson as well in certain pieces of northern Marlboro, and that will be Monday through Friday as well. Again, these are pilot programs, these are mostly grant-funded programs. They're applications that were sent in to the Boston MPO for evaluation through the Community Connections Program. And these are mostly funded through the successful grant applications there. So one, one of the parts of the grant application is showing the long-term viability. So we're really looking forward to collecting fares on these, so we can see if those programs would be viable long-term.
Okay, great, thank you. It seemed, you know, from the discussion at the Legislative Breakfast, it sounded like the Wellesley program had, had grown significantly over, over a period of time. Are you able to comment on your impressions of, of at least that pilot at this point?
Yes, what I would say is that the, the pilot has grown by leaps and bounds, and those leaps typically happen all at once. It's when new segments of populations kind of discover the app and the program. And it depends on how willing or how big the demand is from that population to use it. So while we do a lot of travel training and we try to do a lot of outreach and say, hey, come use this program, that is not nearly as effective as two college students who discover the program. They use it, they love it, they tell all their friends, and now a hundred college students are using it within forty-eight hours. So that, those types of moments, in Wellesley in particular, the Babson College in Wellesley was one of the large growth areas that we experienced in the fall of last year, essentially tripling the ridership overnight.
Wow, wow, great. Well, I appreciate the, the information certainly. Thank you for joining us tonight. You know, really is great information and, and great presentation as well, so thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Any other questions? Any other questions, I'm happy to answer anything.
Yeah, we're going to keep you here for a few minutes, Jim.
Few more minutes.
Yolanda, go ahead.
Yeah. So the Dial-A-Ride in Ashland, is that, that is not currently available to everyone, is that correct?
Dial-A-Ride programs are specific by community, but they're typically based on age and/or age and disability, but they vary per town. I believe Ashland is based on age.
Okay. And then, Michael, I don't know if this, either for you or for Jim, so we have a person on the advisory board, right?
We do.
And who is our current representative to the?
Ed Berman.
Is it still Ed Berman? Okay, okay, good. It might be good to get an update from him at some point as well, or that connection.
Especially when it comes to fare discussion.
Yeah.
You should get briefed regularly.
Yeah, yeah. And then, my last question is regarding that Catch Connect. So you just find it in the App Store, or how would I find it?
Absolutely. If you go in the App Store or the Google Store.
Yep.
And you put in our acronym, MWR TA.
Okay, I'm an Apple user, so.
Yeah, so if you put in, you should, the very first result probably will be the Catch App. So Catch Connect, Catch App. It's sort of meant to be an integrated marketing scheme there.
Okay. Okay, let's not come up.
And the Catch App has more than just the Catch Connect. It also has information on our fixed routes and other alerts about the system, live tracking of the fixed routes, stuff like that as well.
Okay, I'll take a look and see if I can find it. Great. But it's very nice meeting you. As you said, you do have big shoes to fill with Ed, and I think in the future, there might be further conversations that we might want to have with the MWR TA. But I think right now, just getting to know you and understanding what you're accomplishing and working on right now is great, but I think we can continue and get to know you better and continue our partnership with the MWR TA here in Ashland.
Absolutely. And just so you know, I know that there was a mention of Ed there a minute ago. Ed Berman, your advisory board member, I believe he's vice chair of the board.
Okay.
Very active, very active member and very well-informed, fantastic member of the team.
Great.
We're not surprised.
No, not surprised at all. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim, nice to meet you. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but now that you're sober, so hello. Great presentation, awesome presentation. You know, I'm sitting here and my wheels and my mind are spinning, and I don't know if it's because of the medication I'm on, but I'm thinking out loud here with Catch Connect. You know, a lot of parents are, are not happy with having to pay a bus fee. And right now, I'm wondering, is this a cheaper alternative for have their kids to go to school by using Catch Connect?
Unfortunately not. There are instances where school-aged children could ride on public transit, but there are a number of limitations, both statutorily and legally. One of the rules that we have in place is no one under 12 who's not accompanied by someone over the age of 12, like a parent, guardian, older sibling. So anyone over the age of 12 who's school-aged can absolutely go on by themselves. The other piece that's, it's a legal piece that has to do with state law, not so much. There's some federal application as well, but it's mostly state law. Dealing with, basically not competing with charter companies or school bus companies. So how we, how we set up our routes and how we operate can't be in direct competition with, say, like a school bus company. It has to do with how 161B was written, and it deals with issues from essentially 50 years ago, 60 years ago, on why that is. We can definitely still have routes that go by schools. We can have bus stops by schools. We can't develop programs that are directly for schools.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Jim, thanks for coming before us, and it's a great presentation, very, very informative. I think we're all kind of excited about this Catch Connect and its potential. Just wanted to just kind of make you aware of a few things. I'm the Ashland representative to MBTA Advisory Board and also chair the commuter rail subcommittee. So I think, you know, we'd be interested in coordination with the MBTA commuter rail stuff, and we've had a number of issues that I'm sure people will be happy to talk to you about at some point, but just to keep in mind that we'd be happy to coordinate issues with the MBTA and things like that, and we do talk about the regional transit authorities as part of those meetings as well and connections with them. So I wanted to, and Ed came out to our station just before he retired, and we had a great meeting with him there about the condition of the station and those kind of issues, which we won't go into at this point, but that is a, and I've also pressed the, just in case you're interested, Framingham has not had a regular member attending the advisory board, and I'm not sure exactly, you know, if that's because, you know, they just haven't gotten to it, maybe the new administration will, and so that may be another area of coordination that could be improved, I think.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to Framingham. They have a member, their chief operating officer, who attends our advisory board meetings regularly, and he's a, he's a great partner, so I can, I can see.
Is he new, he's new, right? You got a new guy?
Yeah, relatively past year or so.
With the mayor's assistant, okay. Okay, great. And the other thing, I just wanted to kind of broach this idea, and I know, you know, I don't know what your funding situation is, if you have ARPA funds available or C and Infrastructure funds, but we're, we've got quite a lot of projects going on in Ashland that are, you know, apartment buildings in and around downtown, for example. We've got a lot in the pipeline. So we, I think we're anticipating we'll have very much an increase in traffic in the coming years, and maybe trying to get ahead of that, or, you know, this may be the time to try to have capital infrastructure done to the extent, like whether the bus shelters are looking at routes as we look at this planning that's, you know, maybe try to do some planning that's going on in the coming years, you know, looking at downtown Ashland and the growth there, and maybe trying to get people more into buses and working with the state park shuttles and things like that. So I just wanted to kind of put that in your radar screen that we are, I mean, I'm sure in the whole region, you're looking at a lot of new housing projects that are coming forward, and do you have kind of a planning aspect to what you're doing in terms of demand management or planning for the future? Have you been able to do things like that?
So that's a fantastic question. That is one of the things that I'm still wrapping my head around, is the long-term plan on demand management. Typically, the way that has been handled to date is mostly planning around individual developments and how they fit into the current portfolio, and what amendments need to be made either to their plans or to our routes. So say, say a large development goes in with 500 units, and it's already on a route. Well, that's great. We just reach out to the developers and get a bus stop added, and, you know, they already have transportation access there. It's fantastic. So that's sort of the style of planning that's been done to date.
Yeah.
But a more comprehensive plan that looks to future developments, that's something that we still need to do a little bit more of.
So that's interesting. These guys are involved in our comprehensive plan, and so in the coming months and years, that certainly should be part of it. The other thing I'm thinking.
Part of our transportation.
Yeah. So, but I'm also thinking in short term, if maybe if you had a little more information about stuff that's in the pipeline that's coming online fairly soon, that could be helpful in terms of your own kind of planning. But something maybe we should think about, if the planning department can get something to you guys or to Ed. But, so anyway, well, thank you for, you know, coming to see us, and I think, you know, we've identified a number of issues with mass transit. It's really, we're hoping in terms of climate resilience and also traffic control that we can really get people to using these systems and coordinating with the MBTA especially. So, so thanks for coming and, you know, seeing us.
100% on board with that. I definitely, as you can probably imagine, I'm very pro-public transit and very procoordination. Love to get people out of their cars because there's a joke and sort of a, almost like an advertising tagline that I saw started up in Boston a few years ago saying, you're not sitting in traffic, you are traffic. And it's, it's true.
Oh, that's true, yes.
I mean, if you have, if you have 20 people on a bus, that's, you know, the bus is big, maybe it's slow, that's 20 cars that are in front of you.
Yeah.
So it's, it can definitely help.
It's a public service. I just, that reminds me of what, in terms of the free fare and you're ending it, what do you expect, do you have an idea of how that will affect demand and usage?
So, and I want to be very careful on how I say this because fare policy is something that is dictated by the advisory board and is, it's something I'm meant to execute. Our fare-free program has technically ended from a policy perspective. It's just not ended from a practical perspective and a deployment. With that in mind, once that does end, we'll give the public plenty of notice. We've set an internal, sort of an internal minimum of 30 days' notice to the public, and then we'll obviously have a transition period where we're not kicking people off the bus in the first couple of weeks, you know, who, you know, they haven't been paying a fare for two and a half years. We'll make sure that we re-implement them very gently. But that being said, for demand, we would expect that demand would temporarily drop. Demand's been increasing over time since the, kind of the height of the lockdowns back in spring of 2020, where most public transit was down to 10% of normal ridership levels. Most public transit has returned to about 70 or 75% of pre-pandemic levels, and we're right around that average. I would expect that with fares being re-implemented, we would see a temporary dip, but the slope is still up. So I would expect a slight dip and then a kind of a reversion to the, to the slope or the mean.
Did you guys have a long discussion with the advisory board about this? Was that a big issue, or?
That's a great question. The decision to re-implement fares was actually made the better part of a year before I started, and the supply chain issue, the supply chain issue with the hardware requirements went on literally for that long, and I was able to work with our IT consultant, and we were able to resolve those issues sort of in the fall of this past year, but it was probably 16, 17 months of waiting for parts and hardware.
All right, but there was a discussion with the advisory board, okay.
Yes, I just, I wasn't there for it, and it was still long ago.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Michael, you want to ask a question, and then I'll go?
Sure, yeah. Jim, really quick, thank you for coming tonight and discussing the MWR TA. I just wanted to know, how are you doing with staffing and attracting and retaining drivers, as well as some of the other positions you have? That seems to be a problem with a lot of public sector jobs and private sector jobs as well, but how are you in particular doing on that?
So I'll speak to everything but drivers first because it's pretty short. We've retained all my staff since I started, quite happy with that. The entire team in the call center, maintenance, admin team, grants team, all of them. They were all on board when I started, they're all still here now, and we're very happy about that. So there really hasn't been too much recruitment on that end. Our operators are provided by a contractor, KTI National Express is the name of the company, and it's just mandated by state law that the administration can't directly operate the buses themselves, so you have to use a contractor. KTI has struggled at times to provide enough operators. We're at the point now where nearly every single service that was provided prior to the pandemic is being served, is being provided today. There are some slight frequency differences, and that does come with staffing levels. We are short right now, if I were to state, the number of drivers that were short to be fully staffed for where we want to be today is probably right around seven, and that doesn't mean that there aren't seven shifts being covered, though they're able to cover them through overtime and other means. So we are not actually missing service with, almost at all due to the driver shortage. It has hampered expansion, though. There are areas where we wish we had a second bus on a fixed route because the demand is there, and we've had to say, well, hold on, we don't have the workforce for that yet. The recruitment on the workforce has been aggressive. We've been working with the contractor. We have some advantages where other RTAs and other transit agencies don't. The requirement currently for our fleet is only a Class C CDL rather than a standard in most transit agency of being Class B, which is more difficult to get and is a more selective group. So only having the Class C requirement opens up the workforce to a larger group, so we're able to recruit for more, but we're seeing the same challenges that many people are seeing, but we, the impact hasn't been quite as severe on actually missing service. So very similar. We want to have more, the recruiting is very aggressive. We have a long way to go. I actually, I had two separate meetings today about staffing, both related to drivers. It is a, it's a constant area that we need to address, and it's hard to say when this will be resolved at the MWR TA level, the state level, the federal, it's a global issue, to be perfectly honest. So we're hopeful soon, but the thing that resolves this in some ways aren't always, the medicine for this issue isn't always something that we want to take. Sometimes it's bringing people back into the workforce, and that sometimes doesn't happen for the best of reasons. So what, you know, macroeconomic conditions might affect this. So we're hoping that we, that we have a resolution to this situation sooner rather than later, but it's hard to forecast exactly when the level of drivers will be normalized.
Understood.
Did you have any other questions?
No.
That's it? Okay. So thank you, Jim. The MWR TA is kind of near and dear to my heart. I fell in love with it a little bit last year. I was part of the Leadership Metro West group that came to the MWR TA and left with a class project on the MWR TA. So it is, it is, I had always known that, you know, we had seen these little white vans that traveled around Ashland and Framingham and Natick and other places, but never really kind of understood the, the value that the MWR TA brings to the communities and the service that it provides and sort of the, the scale that it provides, because it is, it's not just a few communities, it's widespread throughout the entire region. So the work that you guys do is phenomenal and, you know, it's, I can't, I, you know, for me personally, I don't think that people realize what a service that you guys do provide. I think that, you know, part of our job is probably to get the word out a little bit more. I know the fixed route in Ashland goes to the commuter rail station. I'm a commuter rail person myself, so I do see the, the, the buses there on a daily basis. But I was curious, you know, the Catch Connect that you were talking about, the, for like, for say like Wellesley, if somebody's using the Catch Connect, do they need to stay within the town of Wellesley, or will drivers bring them to other towns, like say, to the Natick Mall or something like that?
That's a fantastic question, and because the Catch Connect program currently is a pilot, we do limit the geographic regions for those pilots quite extensively. Part of the reason for that is Catch Connect is actually very expensive to operate. Per passenger trip, it's pretty much on par with demand response, and it is, it is quite expensive. So we limit it to the geographic region of the town, but based on what's available through the grant funding and maybe what's available through, say, local assessment funding in a particular town, we can look at possibly having additional areas. And with Wellesley in particular, they viewed the Woodland Tea Station as well as the Natick Community Center, kind of on the edges of their community, as a couple of spots where they really wanted to make sure that there were connections. On the Natick side, that was to make sure they connect to our other fixed routes. On the Woodland side, that was obviously to make sure they connected to the MBTA. So with the, or not just the MBTA, obviously they have the commuter rail, but the Green Line in particular.
Yeah.
So you, we don't have to have it just be within a single community. If we could pilot the program in multiple communities, that'd be great, too. We're actually, we have a pilot currently in Natick and Framingham, both communities combined, on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, and our ADA community has loved that. They've, they've used it quite extensively, but it's also open to the general public. And we have an application currently in, we don't know how, if we'll be successful or not, to see if we can do something similar in Framingham and Natick during the nighttime. We don't have any fixed routes at night, so we're looking to see if we can do that there. So crossing communities and having other locations, absolutely possible, but as the program gets more expansive, it does get quite a bit more expensive.
Gotcha, totally understand. Could you talk a little bit about the demand response? Gotcha. Totally understand. Could you talk a little bit about the demand response program, the Dial-A-Ride and so and how how it works and how you had said that in Ashland it was, you know, it's specifically for the elderly. But what what does that program look like? And how can people apply and get get involved in that?
Absolutely. So I'm just bringing up our Dial-A-Ride page on my website. Actually, maybe if I share this website, the screen here, do you mind if I share the screen again?
No, go ahead.
That might be a good way to share this. So on our website, the Metro West RTA website, there is a section up at the top called Senior and Disabled. And this deals with most of our demand response services. ADA Paratransit is available in Ashland because we run fixed route through Ashland. It's on a three quarter of a mile corridor around our fixed route. So it's not every square inch of Ashland, but our fixed route runs, you know, right down one thirty-five. So if you imagine three quarters of a mile on either side of that, it's quite a wide and encompassing corridor that runs right through the middle of Ashland. So that ADA Paratransit is available anytime the fixed route is running. So someone can call ahead, schedule that trip, and we will operate that trip. The Dial-A-Ride program in particular, if we scroll down a little bit here, requires two days advance booking. It is available in Ashland, Marlboro, Sapporo, and Wayland. Here's the number that someone can call for the eligibility eligibility requirements, five oh eight eight two zero four six five oh. Payments for that are made through an account system that's set up in our call center. And that's how most of this, from an administrative perspective, takes place, is through our call center. We also call it Central Reservations. And they call they they take applications. Those applications can either come in directly to us or through the COA in town, depending on what the town has set up. And I I'd have to double check with them. I wouldn't I wouldn't want to speak out of school here and say that I know if the application goes directly to our call center, it goes through a COA. But those applications come in for those who are qualified, and then they get set up in our system. And the individual calls into our call center and says, you know, they can book up to a couple of weeks in advance. And they give them a call, say where they want to go to and from. And that ride gets booked. And then they get picked up. They'll be given a window of when the ride will be operated. So if they, you know, they want one o'clock, they might have to be willing to go at twelve fifty or one one ten or something. But we try our best to to meet the request exactly as requested. And other information on sort of like the policies and procedures, they're found on this page. But generally, it's just an age verification and then the application process, which is, yeah, I think it's like a one-page application that gets sent in with some basic information like name and address.
And the cost of that is the same as the regular fixed route? Or is that a different cost?
So with fares, there are there are different costs based on ABA and fixed route. The way the law is written at the federal level is you can charge up to double your fixed route for ADA Paratransit. The reason for that is it is it's not just double the it's actually much higher than double the cost. But they wanted to limit how much more you could charge for ADA Paratransit services. So ADA can be more expensive. But we also have for our fixed routes in particular, discounts for seniors and discounts for people who have like Commission for the Blind cards, active duty members in uniform. When it comes to Catch Connect, that is two dollars per ride. And then with the Dial-A-Ride, I believe Dial-A-Ride is the, I believe we charge, I think it's two dollars or one dollar. Let me let me double check with my team here. I just I'll I'll get back to you on that. I don't want to say it's like a dollar and then it's a dollar twenty-five. But it's in that range. It's not like five or ten dollars. But let me confirm, and I'll I'll get back to Stephen with that information and send it along to you all.
Okay, sounds sounds good. And then while you're on the website, just what's the best way for folks to find out what the the fixed route schedule is? Is it on the website? Is it an app?
Sure. So in that Catch app that you can get in the the Google Store or the the Apple App Store, information on the schedules are located there. But they're also located on our website. And up here at the top, you can select routes, and there's fixed route, commuter routes and Catch Connect. You just select fixed routes. Those will bring up a list of all of our routes here. And in Ashland in particular, the Route Five runs through Ashland. And so if you click on that, it provides you with a timetable on when those buses will arrive at particular bus stops. And down at the bottom, there's also a general map of where the route operates. And if you wanted a PDF or printable version of this, you could click on the download PDF, and it would bring up a nice formatted schedule that is easily printable. And it has some other contact information as well as like no service days on major holidays, stuff like that.
Okay, great. And one other question. So if Rob had mentioned that, you know, there's more developments and things that are happening coming down the coming down the road here in Ashland, and if so, if there does become a need or, you know, we see that that there could be a solution that the MWR TA could provide, whether it is an additional bus stop or it's, you know, a shuttle service from, say, you know, downtown to to the commuter rail station on a on a relatively regular basis, do we work with Ed Berman on on anything that we wanted to potentially bring to the MWR TA?
So the advisory board member is the primary advocate for the community. So if there are things that the community wants to advocate for as a community, absolutely send it in through Ed. The thing is, though, you can absolutely send it to myself as well directly. We're constantly meeting with different groups and different advocacy groups and different planning groups. You know, members of my staff are probably meeting with different COA directors and people going to COAs probably every day at this point. Our travel trainer is out and about pretty much every day. So I would say that the advisory board member is the principal advocate and kind of that focal point. But we're a very open organization. We will talk to anyone about any program. We will work with anyone. When it comes to actually implementing a program, if there's a cost involved, obviously, that has to be part of the budget. So that'd go through the budget goes through the advisory board. So obviously, we'd want Ed very much involved in that or any future advisory board member. But again, we are a very open organization, and we will talk to to anyone who wants to hear the story of public transit and has an idea of how to make it better. We're all here for it.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Does anyone else have any additional questions for Jim?
Great.
So thank you, Jim, for for joining us tonight for the presentation and for being just an advocate for public transportation. The MWR TA does a great service to our community and neighboring communities. And, you know, we want to we want to help support the work that that you guys are doing as well. So and we look forward to a to a long partnership with you.
Absolutely. And I'll make sure to follow up with the information on the specific price of Dial-A-Ride. I apologize. I didn't have that on the tip of my tongue there. I'll send that over either later tonight or tomorrow.
Sure, not a problem at all.
And and that thank you all for having me here tonight. I really appreciate it. You know, I know that when it comes to meetings like this, you know, sometimes they're very full schedules or there's, you know, pressing matters that, you know, whether it's a new development or something like that. Talking about public transit, obviously, I love doing it, but it's also very important for our communities. So knowing that your community cares and wants to talk about this, that it's very it's very heartening to me. So I really appreciate you all having me. And I definitely look forward to making the best public transportation system possible. So thank you all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Steve, for for bringing this, you know, bringing this to us. I'm glad that that Jim was able to.
You know, I prior to Ed Berman being the the representative from Ashland, I was the representative to the MWR TA, yeah, for a couple of years. And then it got, you know, it was just my work schedule. It was just very difficult to get to board meetings that were usually four o'clock in the afternoon and so on. But I think Ed, you know, I think I think we're all pleased that Ed is there. And but I think, you know, I think you may have mentioned it earlier about getting more frequent updates. So we should definitely have Ed come in specifically about the about his role at the MWR TA.
Exactly, and the issues they're facing.
Right. The other thing before we move on, you know, the other part of our internal transportation system is we have a bus at the community center. And that bus is used for transporting people to it's it's kind of it's real local driving. So they'll pick up people to bring to the community center. They'll pick up people to bring to local doctors' appointments and so on. So it is rather limited. But, you know, I think it gets used, you know, on a fairly regular basis. So that's another part of our our system. And and I guess this is a question for Michael relative to the new developments that that are either here or planned. I know with Cirrus, they run a shuttle down to the train station. I know the developer for the Mill Building talked about running a shuttle from that project to the train station. I don't know if that's happened, if that's part of the permitting for Chestnut Street. I don't recall seeing that in or hearing about that. I'm not sure if it's part of the discussions on one twenty-six as well.
I don't think it was a part of the discussions with Chestnut or five oh one Pond Street. And I'm not necessarily sure if it's being talked about as part of three oh one.
Okay. At one point with Hunter Chestnut, they were talking about building a bus shelter, right? Because if there was going to be maybe a bus stop for the MWR TA?
Yeah, I'm not sure if if that made it through the final.
Okay.
That's an interesting point, though, because we do have public funds available. If we think bus shelters are going to be needed, you know, maybe this is the time to have, you know, somebody like Jim or us apply for those kinds of things with the ARPA funding.
Well, there are there are bus shelters, and there's a bus shelter at the is it Ashland Woods? And I believe I believe the developer put that in himself. That was not, you know. And I think, to me, that's part of the kind of the conditions of some of these projects that, you know, they support
Yeah.
sustainable, right?
The other thing, there is no bus right now on there is no fixed bus route on Chestnut Street.
Right.
No.
So even if they put a bus shelter, it would have there's no bus unless they're talking about bus shelters for the kids or something. I don't know.
I mean, I've I've talked to Ed about like adding bus stops on the MWR TA.
Right.
And so if there is if there is need, if there's people that would be potentially using it, I think that they can adjust that fix.
But I I think potentially, this is where the Catch Connect would come into play. All right. And I think for somebody that, let's say, living on one twenty-six that doesn't have a fixed route, but is going to either the Framingham or the Ashland train stations, it seems like, you know, potential.
So if you live on one twenty-six, there is a fixed route on one twenty-six
Yes.
that you could take to the Framingham train station.
It does. It goes all the way from the condos, I think, all the way down towards like past Market Basket and then
Right.
to the Framingham station.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, I think this is a great presentation. And I think there's, you know, some great potential for that that micro transit concept. We'll see how it develops ultimately.
And planning, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So but it was a it's a good discussion. Okay.
Now on to trash fees.
Now on to trash fees.
Another great discussion.
From from a high point to a less high point. So our next item on the agenda under Old New Businesses, discuss taking a vote on increasing the trash fees. I know that we had a couple meetings ago, we had Brittany Acapone with us and Doug Scott from not Doug Scott, Doug Small.
I do it all the time.
Wrong Doug, sorry.
Different Doug.
From DPW, talking about sort of the the rationale behind how trash has basically the fee compression and what's basically what's happening is is that the charges are for collection are outweighing what we have currently budgeted in our in our in our
Expenses are outweighing the income.
Yeah, that is exactly what I
And actually, it's been that way for a couple of years. But we had built up such a strong retained earnings fund balance in the account that we were able to utilize, you know, to the tune of three hundred thousand every year, those retained earnings to help subsidize the budget. So what we currently face now is now we do not have those retained earnings that we can rely upon. And at the same time, we're seeing, especially with this latest agreement with Waste Management, significant cost increase over what we were paying. And so the two of those provide us with a pretty significant budget deficit that we have to look at at closing in order to continue to provide this service. So, you know, I'll be repeating myself, I'm sure. But, you know, we derive revenue primarily from two two sources, which is a base fee, which is currently one forty-six for households and seventy-eight dollars for seniors. And then we also have bag fees that help generate revenue as well for the for the town. So when we had first talked about this, you know, a year, maybe a little bit longer ago, you know, one of the things that we talked about is do we want to, you know, put everything on the base fee and leave the bag fees the same. But as the conversation evolved organically, there was a thought process of, okay, maybe we we put together a proposal that's that splits to a certain extent the the cost and shifts has some of the cost borne by the increase in the base fee and then also part of the cost, you know, taken care of through an increase in the back fees. So what we looked at doing originally was, and Brittany's here, and Brittany, please feel free to jump in if I if I mess something up. We looked at increasing the base fee to two hundred and nineteen dollars, which was an increase of twenty percent. And then we looked at increasing the bag fees. I believe your proposal is twenty original proposal was twenty percent, correct, Britt?
Fifty for each, right?
No, it was it was fifty percent for both the regular and seniors.
No, okay, I'm sorry, for the flat fee. I meant the bag fees. So you're working at twenty percent. You were originally looking at.
Yeah, the back fee was the original proposal was an increase in forty percent.
Yeah, they're now at fifty each, right? Isn't that basically what we're?
Yeah, the the flat fee was a fifty percent increase for regular and senior. And then the bag cost was a forty percent increase for the small flex bag and the large flex bag. That was the original proposal.
So I just want to make sure, because Brittany and I have been talking about a a few different scenarios. Like what we have here in the packet, Brittany, is we're recommending a twenty percent increase in the back fees. That was what we had originally talked about. Is that is that not not accurate here?
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure what you have in front of you. No.
It's it's page three on your analysis.
Or is that an old because this was dated March third, twenty twenty-two?
So that was one of my questions is how did you, you know, what was the thought process in terms of this particular proposal, regardless of what the bag fee percentage is? You know, clearly, you had a you had a delta you had to make up. And but what was the the thinking between, you know, the flat fee versus the bag and how you you assigned cost to both?
Well, again, you know, what we heard was that there wasn't really much of an appetite to stick at all to the base fee. And so, again, we looked at a scenario where we could split it up a bit. The thing is, is the bag fee is variable in in terms of, you know, how much how many bags are purchased. So it's not necessarily a steady revenue source. So we don't necessarily want to, you know, hitch our wagons significantly to that revenue source because, again, it varies so much. So that's how we
But why how how much variation could there be? I mean, folks are, you know, they're still they're generating trash. You know, so there you what what variable there is is going to make it significantly less bag usage, I guess?
The cost.
So what what would be the option, though, for folks?
Recycle more.
Okay, well, that's that's not a bad thing, right? I mean, we want to, you know, we're trying to incentivize recycling. We're trying to incentivize composting as well. And, you know, so that's 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 a good thing to to incentivize.
For an environment. But if you're talking about a municipal operation, an apartment that needs to run, yes, so your costs are going yeah, so your costs are going to remain a, a certain level.
Right.
And so if the bags are so high, the costs are so.
But what's high, what, what, you know?
High compared to what they are now.
Okay, all right.
So if they are, if they are high and it pushes people to do a better job of recycling, which is great for the environment, then you, then you don't get as much revenue from the bag fees as you would have before. And it's like with wa, it's like with water rates and water fees. You want people to consume, and so what you do is you tier your water usage to where the more you consume, the more you pay. But what that does is that incentivizes people to use less. So then, it's, it's, I wish it was a real black and white.
So right now, bag costs a dollar eighty to the consumer. And we're looking to make it to eighteen. If we made it to fifty, I'm just throwing this out, if we made it to fifty, do you really think there would be a dramatic differential there in, in, you know, how people purchase and use bags? You know, I'm, I'm having a hard time with the, with the flat fee. And I'm, I'm having a hard time because I think it's, it's, it's somewhat punitive. For people that don't necessarily generate, let's use, you know, let's say Brandy as an example, who composes, doesn't generate that much in the way of trash because she's composting. So I find it punitive in that sense. I'm not against raising the flat fee, I just think fifty percent is punitive. And I think we might be able to find a better balance between the bags and, and the fees. You know, at this, at the fifty percent increase, you're, you're making us one of the highest feed towns, at least in the information that you provided.
Well, I'm, I'm not making you.
No, no, no.
I'm not making you do that.
Come on, Michael, you're making it up.
And it's, I mean, I, I don't think you're wrong, I went through and looked.
That, that was the original proposal, Michael, the new proposal, I'm not sure if you have printed out or not.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to print that out or not. But, but wait, I, I just, just to answer Steve's thing, so Weston's flat fee is at two forty. Franklin is at two forty-two. Medway's at two fifty. Concord's at two seventy-two.
I'm just looking at, at these two sheets here, and it's just.
That's exactly what I was.
And I'm taking us from, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, I'm just making a point that it's, I feel that's, at, at that level, it's punitive, that's.
Well, could I just, Brittany, did you, what is the, the proposed bag fee increase now? And did you, do you have gradations on that similar to what you have gradations on the, on the flat fee?
The flat fee for, just from a financial standpoint, would just be more of a stable revenue source for the town. The original proposal of increasing the flat fee fifty percent and the bag fee forty percent, just, it seemed to be the fairest method of generating the revenue necessary to support operations.
Is that what's being proposed?
The new proposal that we looked at would be increasing the bag fee seventy-five percent. And then we would, and then the flat fee would only have to be increased twenty-five percent. And those increases.
We don't see that.
You don't have that right now, that's something that we talked about today.
Okay, so, because I was going to say, I'm like, all I've been seeing is the proposal for a fifty percent increase for the flat fee. What I'd like to see is, how can we look at, okay, if we make it forty percent or thirty percent or sixty percent?
Yeah, what's the trade off?
Let's do, let's do the comparisons, which we, which is, and like I said, I would like to see that, right? When you're looking at either raising or lowering something, it's good to look at, okay, this is what we're currently doing and this is what we're currently generating. If we do it at forty percent, fifty percent, sixty percent, this is what we're going to see. So do we have to make this decision?
Your laundry packets, there should be sliding scales of if, if a rate increases by.
That's just on, that's just on the flat fee, Brittany.
Oh, yeah.
We don't have anything on the bag fee.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah. And I don't think, I don't think we had that earlier.
What page in the, in, because we.
It's on the page.
It's attachments C and D are the.
Seven?
Just the flat.
It's like page seven.
Oh, okay, there it is for the flat fee, okay.
For the seniors, one for the regulars.
There it is.
So my, my question is, if, if I'm looking at attachment A, which talks about the FY twenty-three budget and the Trash Enterprise Fund, the one point six million for trash removal. So, you know, I know a good portion of it is fixed, because it's based on like transportation and, and equipment and all that stuff. But I assume a portion of that is variable per, per bag or per tonnage or something along those lines, correct?
Right, so there's, there's the trash hauling fee. And then there's a cost of disposal, which is called a tipping fee, which is usually measured as a per ton basis. So we're currently in the seventies with the new contract, it went up to ninety-two.
Okay, so my question is, if, so if, if there's a reduction in bags, if people stop buying as many bags and people go to more recycling and composting, that tipping fee will decrease because there'll be less bags.
You would think, yeah.
So I'm curious what the, sort of what that, what that trade off looks like. So if, if we can, because right now, we're talking trash removal is one point six, is, how much of it is variable?
Yeah, that's.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I know what you're saying, I, I think.
Because, because part of it is like, yes, you want to make sure we cover the majority of the fixed costs with the flat fee because, because the bag cost is, is variable. So, so you can't count on that as a revenue stream completely. But if the number of bags decrease and costs will therefore decrease in some way, you know, what, you know, because I, I personally would rather increase a bag fee and encourage people to do more composting and recycling. I mean, as long as we can make our budget, because that's like important, but.
That is important.
But, but I'm, you know, it's kind of like if, if that behavior modifies, so people have less trash bags. You know, like I, I'm just trying to see what that trade off looks like.
Well, I think, you know, it goes back to what I, I said at the beginning is, you know, this is kind of a test year in a sense. Because we're, we're kind of throwing a dart here to figure out what is the best kind of ratio between a flat fee and a bag fee. You know, I have my opinion, we all have our, our opinion on this. You know, clearly, we're not going to vote tonight, we need more information on this, at least more, more pondering of these, these trade offs. But, you know, I, I look at this as, this year, this is kind of, you know, because we, we haven't adjusted fees for so long that, you know, we're taking kind of a draconian step here in, in, in the sense of, you know, the, the flat fee proposal and so on. So, you know, my sense is that we're going to wind up adjusting fees, maybe not next year, but the year after, or, you know. And if, if we see that, that bag usage has declined to a point that it's impacted the bottom line, then we go back and, you know, we, we readjust. I mean, that's the way I, I, I see this, I don't, you know, we don't have, you know, because we haven't done this on a, on a regular basis and we've lived off retained earnings, we don't have real perfect information here.
Yeah, I mean, I think doing that analysis that you're talking about would be, would be pretty difficult to do. I think what we would have to do is, kind of like Steve says, kind of take our best guess, do our best estimate and, and.
Yeah, well, if we say, okay, well, so tonnage will decrease by twenty percent, what does that mean? For, you know, it doesn't have to be specifics, just more like, yeah, more like.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Joe.
I'm, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, but I'm, I'm looking at attachment A. And I'm looking at FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three budget line items. And under recycling revenues, it looks like it's been whited out. Is that because we're not, we won't receive any recycling revenues at all?
Did you say, the, the actual is eighty-seven, eighty-eight hundred, but there's nothing forecast in the coming year?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, Joe.
So what gives, what's the incentive of recycling if we're not making any money?
Well, because it takes.
Decreases your trash.
Yeah, it, it decreases your, your trash tonnage, so the disposal. So your, your recycling fee, what they call your MRF fee, so that's at like a hundred and forty dollars, which is higher than the tipping fee. But when you offset it through the money you get back through the commodities, so like there's a, there's a market there for recycled plastic and gas, glass and everything. It actually brings it back underneath what the, what the tipping fee is for regular trash. So you're actually, you're actually paying less for disposing recycling than you would be for trash. And so that's where the benefit comes in.
Okay, just, it just looked rather, if there was an explanation to, you know, on this, that would have been a little bit easier for me to understand that part of it. But, so right now, on that same attachment, this is budgeted surplus of deficit. We're going to be running a deficit for the next two or three years. And in twenty twenty-three, we're looking at close to a half million dollar deficit in, in, in that budget line item?
Yeah, and we're in FY twenty-three right now.
Right now, right.
So we do have retained earnings, right, Brittany, to, to offset this year, it's the final year.
Yeah, this will be the final year, after, after this year, we'll have about fifty thousand retained earnings.
And, and the reason for the retained earnings that are, that are falling the way they are is, is the fact that we're not getting the recycling monies? Is that?
No, it's, it's because we never raised fees over the last few years. So it, it's, it's never kept up with the costs. So we've made a conscious decision not to, to go ahead and subsidize it.
I, I understand that, but I don't have a discussion.
But at some point, we were getting in more, more in fees than we were using, right? That's where the, all those retained earnings came from.
Yeah, so we built up, we built up a decent balance.
Okay.
And how, how long, I mean, because this only goes back to fiscal year twenty-one, when we started using those retained earnings, right? So when, I mean, were we retained, did we have retained earnings from when we started the program?
Oh, no, no. So we had, we had generated over years, a pretty decent retained earning balance. And you, you know, it, it got to the point where it was like one million dollars.
Right, and that's what we've been able to use the last number of years. And we didn't do any fee increases because we had retained, I mean, which is what you do, right? You have retained earnings, why increase the fee? But now we're realizing that we no longer have those retained earnings, so we need to increase the fee. And to make sure we match our costs, we have to increase it a fair amount. Rather than, rather than had we increased it slowly, kept, increased, you know, you know, slowly reuse our retained earnings, we might have been able to do it longer and the fee could have gone up slowly.
Exactly.
And we're not budgeting for retained earnings, according to the spreadsheet.
Well, if we, if we have the fee fair increases or fee increases, we wouldn't need to budget for it. And we don't have anything to budget.
So we're just, we're budgeting right now, I mean, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're planning to increase, that's right, increase our, our fees just to break even, just to cover that delta and the story.
Yeah, I believe the, the last one we'd worked out today, Brittany, we, we would be able to do two years. We would generate retained earnings, small amounts of retained earnings for the first two years. And then we would have a deficit in the third year, but we would have enough retained earnings to cover that, so it would be like a three year period.
And that's based on current charges and current fees, right?
That would be, that would be with the increased, the increased.
No, I mean, in regards to, you would have retained earnings based on the current contract and the current fees that we're paying and no recycling and stuff like that. Should things change, should prices go down, should gas go down, we might have more retained earnings if our costs go down and we keep that same base fee.
Correct.
I just want to, I, I do see folks with their hands up. I'll open it up for, for questions and comments once we kind of finish our discussion here. So I just want to make sure that you guys know that, that I do see your hands up, so just hold on for a little while longer.
I think the other thing we need to be sensitive about is, you know, the current service levels as well.
Right.
And, you know, it's kind of putting salt in the wound in a sense. So I think there, you know, like, at least to my thinking, there's a little sensitivity to that component. I know we've got, we've got a bill to pay.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, I mean, it is what it is. It's, and the performance issue is, which is certainly there. You know, there are certain mechanisms to address that as well, including like fines and things like that. So for example, we're not going to have, you know, we might actually have a little bit less of a deficit this year than, than what we'd anticipated because we're fining, you know, Waste Management.
Can you talk a little bit about sort of where we are with Waste Management and sort of the current, you know, how, how we're working through this, this issue with them?
Yeah, so first of all, I, I want to say, it's definitely, Waste Management has been with us since this trash program started. And they constantly delivered good service, but something has definitely happened this past year. And a lot of it comes down to equipment and then drivers. And, you know, that's an industry-wide issue. I mean, Jim Nie even told us, you know, getting CDLs is, is a very tough thing. And so that's one of the performance, one of the drivers of the performance issues that we have. So we're in the process of really kind of putting the pressure on them through the fines and the, and, and penalties that they pay to get that to, to turn around. Now, I will say, I don't want to make it sound like I'm making an excuse for Waste Management, but this is happening with other haulers. The question is naturally, well, why don't you just go to a different hauler? I'm not necessarily sure that another hauler is going to be better. You know, if you look at, you know, we had three firms that were interested in servicing Ashland. One, Republic, if you just do a simple Google search, they've been on the front page of the Boston Globe about, you know, trash in some of their communities is staying week at a, weeks at a time. Harvey was the other one, and Harvey seems to be doing a decent job. And so we can have, you know, we have the ability to, you know, look at.
But at what, what, at what cost, right? I mean, Harvey's, I mean, unless we can compare contracts and say, okay, what's going to be, you know? Whereas we have a relationship with Waste Management and how do we improve their services to us? But as you said, as with many industries, it's one of those things, right? They keep telling you, be patient at the restaurant, be patient at the, the store, be patient wherever, because there are still people, you know, they're, they're, they're short on staff everywhere.
Right.
Have they gotten better on the communication front when things?
Yes, to, they have gotten better, it's not where it needs to be. So we still find ourselves, they've done a really decent job, I think, over the last couple of weeks, just in general with their service, but also with their communication. But we still find, like, if they say, okay, all routes are picked up, you know, sometimes we do find, like with the condos, there's like a, a section or something missed. And so we have to spend our time, like Doug and Roy, have to go kind of check up and make sure that what they've provided information wise is accurate. So we haven't had as many issues the last couple of weeks, but it's only been a couple of weeks. You know, it's certainly not a point where I think we're comfortable with saying, okay, they've definitely turned things around.
Right.
And the routes that we find that they're missing areas, especially in the condos, is that because we think they have new drivers who don't know where, I mean, I mean, if you look at some of these condo communities, it's difficult to figure out, okay, what, where do I need to go if you're not used to it? So is that the kind of thing where it's new drivers going in and they just miss a little section and?
That, that is a big piece, especially when they think that they've got everything.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they do have like a rotating list of drivers now. So.
So when do we need to make a decision on this? Because it sounds like we're not quite there yet.
I mean, we really need to have something by, we can't just keep pushing this off. We've got to look at something in February, you know.
So could we look at having a few different scenarios where, you know, we see what the trash, you know, like if we increase the trash bag fee by say fifty percent?
That's what I was going to say.
And where we could bring down the fixed fee?
Yeah, like, I mean, you know, one of the things Britt and I worked on today was, like I said, increasing the bag fee seventy-five percent and reducing the trash fee, the increase of that to twenty-five percent.
You know, I found the sheets that showed me, okay, if we, you know, this is in five percent increments, but then I have to go to another sheet and say, okay, well, now if I do this one at this amount and this at this amount, this is what I get. I would think there's some way that you can create some kind of. I would think there's some way that you can create some kind of spreadsheet that says if we do, you know, the fees at this amount and the bags at this amount, this is what we get.
Right, we need revenue, like at revenue targets.
So a question on if you increase the bag fee, let's say the thirty-three gallon by seventy-five percent. What 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 does that come out to?
So that would be three fif- three fifteen.
Okay, so you can do, I played around with the numbers over the last couple of days. And I think you can, you can actually decrease that a little bit, the bag bag fee. Decrease the um decrease the flat fee, make that twenty-five percent, increase the bags to two seventy-five. And you'd still, you'd have, you'd have more, well, you'd have more revenue than you'd need to cover just that that delta. We don't have to get in the weeds here, but I'm just saying, if we had that information broken down with with, you know, bags. If we if we marked them up ten percent, thirty percent, forty percent, so on. And then I think we can all have an opportunity to play around with that, you know, those ratios.
And then also, like, if if there's a decrease in bag purchases by ten percent, twenty percent, thirty percent.
What will that do?
What does that do to the to the tipping fee costs, you know, if we're going to estimate, you know?
Right, if there's less trash being generated, there's less expense, so how does that work?
And so maybe we can find a a good.
And and I'm not sure if it's wise to just budget purely to cover that. Budgeted number. I think it's probably wise to.
Go a little above.
And that's one of the reasons why we looked at this. Brittany, it's a little bit. It's it's not the simplest thing, but we could probably put something like that together, right?
Yeah, I can definitely do the um, like, the five percent increments in the uh bag costs. And then do one spreadsheet that shows something to that effect.
I like what you did with the with the base fees, that kind of comparison, so if we.
Yeah, I can do something simple and and put something together. I'm not sure off to meet with Doug on the um. If people recycle more, how that'll impact it. I think there'll be a lot of assumptions, probably.
Which is fine, I mean, that's, you know, there's no, there's no hard and fast if you're trying to look at. Planning and assumptions, that's fine, as long as we know what those assumptions are.
Yeah, I'll meet with Doug on that, we can put something together.
Joe, do you have anything else that you wanted to?
I I just wanted, Michael and and Brittany had, were discussing different figures today. And I was wondering if we would would be able to get those figures, to take a look at, to compare with what we had in that pack, because it sounds like they were different. And I would like the more the more up-to-date figures for me to make a a a better and conscious decision on what on what route we need to take. But if we're going to go in different, you know, increments, then I'd like to see those as well.
Yeah, Joe, if, so the, we just worked out one scenario this afternoon, kind of playing around with different things. If you want to wait, and so we'll put together those, that that chart with the increments. Make it relatively.
It might almost be interesting if, you know, a lot of times we get just a flat PDF. You know, if either in a meeting she wants to say, okay, Kay, here here's here's the spreadsheet and the model. And if we do this, this is what it shows up with. And if we do this, this is what it shows up with. And maybe either send, give us the Excel spreadsheet or at a meeting, take us through. You know, you have your expenses, you have the different households, the the levels and the bags. And actually plug it in so we can see, oh, well, if we do forty percent for this and ten percent for this, this is what it looks like. It's almost like we need to do something interactive in the meeting.
With Brittany's trade-off, if you're decreasing, there's a set of assumptions there as well.
If you're if you're decreasing the base fee, you need to increase the bag fee. So can we look at that interactively?
Yeah, I mean, I think probably it'd be easier just to have that that spreadsheet with the breakdowns. You could kind of like go in through cross purposes. Yeah, I mean.
It's fine, I I just, you know, when I see that, okay, you know, we have this the attachment C and D that shows us the bag fees, okay. I didn't have the time to go and and do the calculations like you did, Steve, so, but if I had a spreadsheet or if I had something that I could look at it. Right.
Well, why don't we go ahead? I know that there's been a few folks that have their hands raised and I I'll open it up for. Yeah, there's a, there's.
So. It's three different names.
We see, we see, we see a few folks on. So Natalie, you've had your your hand up for for quite a while. Do you want to unmute yourself, identify who you are and and? Go ahead and provide some comment. Hi.
Hi, so actually, a couple of my questions have turned to comments since you, you know, went on to discuss things like the the general discontent in the town around trash pickup. I was going to ask about performance guarantees with the vendor, it sounds like we have those going. So I just wanted to acknowledge that you you you've addressed those questions that I had. The other question I have, though, is the prediction you're talking about presenting in a meeting, or you're talking about something where residents will be able to see. Those projections and what that means, like what the budget is that you're trying to hit and how these different rate increases will help actually be able to 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 um. To satisfy the costs yearly? Or is that, is that somewhere I can attend, is that is that for residents as well, or?
Yeah, so we would cover that at a public meeting.
Right, the request would be for us to review that in our public meeting. And and share it on the screen so that as we're looking at the different things, you could see that as well.
And is that targeted for February, your thing?
It has to be, right? Yeah, that would be our first meeting in February.
Okay, I just wanted to make a general comment that, like, much with any other surveys or something you buy at the supermarket, hearing the magnitude of the rate increases you're proposing. I mean, one would gawk at hearing these kind of increases on any other commodity or service, so I just wanted to to say that. It does seem like too much all at once. And so I'd be curious to see the predictions and see if we really need to go that far that quickly.
Yeah.
So those are my comments.
It it is, I mean, the magnitude is is significant, but that's, those are the consequences of pushing it out, continuing to push it out.
Of not having done anything.
And not addressing it before.
How many years has it been since we've changed the trash fee?
The last trash fee adjustment we made was seven years ago, maybe eight, and we actually adjusted the rates down. Those were a lot, those were a lot better conversations.
I was going to say, I I don't remember going up at all. I remember we had some extra money and we said, okay, we can take them down a little bit.
And, you know, I I say this every year, we're going to face the same thing with water and sewer. The board continues to choose the euro percent rate increases, maybe two percent, maybe four percent. There's going to come a time, there's going to come a time when it's going to come home to roost.
You remember when we did reduce the rates, we were getting substantial revenue from the recycling at that point.
No, no, it wasn't, actually. No, we had just negotiate, we were in the place where we were.
Oh, we had a new contract.
Yeah, we had a new contract.
That was very good.
Yes.
So we were like, okay, with this new contract, we don't need to continue charging the higher rate.
Exactly, exactly. No, we, at that point, we were actually paying for recyclables, paying more for recyclables. That was when the whole China, what'd they call it, the China sword? Was it, was that the, it was some strange term.
They're getting their dress deserves shown.
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
It's true.
So thank you, Natalie, I, we appreciate.
I just want to make one more point. I hear what you're saying about the rates not having been increased for a while, but I think then it sounds like we need to, something we need to stay on top of more and have like longer-term predictions. And longer-term, like, time for people to make peace with the fact that rates need to go up over a certain time, rather than be like, oh, it's been seven years and now you pay seventy-five percent more. I think we should just stay on top of it a little bit more going forward.
Natalie, I agree a hundred percent.
Definitely. Thank you, Natalie, for your input.
Okay, the next person, I can't read your name because I can't read. Rick.
Rick James.
Rick, go ahead and unmute yourself and identify yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Rick James, I'm on Tyler Lane, it's a first time, thank you for having us. Quick question. I understand that the projections are kind of iffy at this point. We are going to be getting how many new condo complexes coming in the next two years and how's that going to affect everything? Because right now, as been pointed out, the usage and the service has been a little lackluster. I don't, do not want to say that they have been poor about it, because their communication has been great. But we are now adding how many more houses and you were just saying that condo complexes can be one of the bigger issues for these companies and we're about to add three more.
Rick, that's a great question. So what's being proposed, or or these complexes that you're talking about, are apartment units? Not condos, so they're rental units, not ownership units? And rental units, they're required to contract with their own hauler, so they aren't part of the town's trash program. Does that makes, that makes sense?
That ma- that makes sense. I mean, as 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 a household, we, I mean, tonight's my trash night, so after I'm done here, I'm taking the trash out. But, I mean, we, buying the bags is, it it is what it is, but you're asking us to pay, you know, seventy-five percent more. While we still do recycle, all of us have our recycling bins, we we do a good job sorting things out personally, but I don't know about others. It's going to be hard to stomach, I guess, the 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 increase, knowing that some people are not doing what they should be doing. And they're not being, you know, warned or or something to that effect. I know our recycling bin has been damaged through no fault of anyone's, but. And our trash man was very kind enough to tell us to contact you guys to to get it replaced. But is there some sort of system in place to find people who are not necessarily recycling properly to lower this? So we don't have to deal with these sorts of large increases?
So I think, Rick, they have the ability to basically observe the trash as it's being dumped. And see, you know, if there's recycle, non-recyclable material being put in the recyclable stream, right? I'm not sure if that, I don't sure, I'm not sure if it's of the magnitude that would actually translate into real cost reductions for people.
I think the question that he's asking is, is there a way to see if people are not recycling enough and putting more into the trash stream?
Well, that's what I just said. Sometimes they have cameras that are able to observe the trash as it's being dumped. And see whether recycle, non-recyclable material is being put in the recycling stream. So sometimes they have the ability to do that.
Well, but our but our trash bags, right? So our orange trash bags, you can't see if there are recyclable recyclables in the trash bag.
Well, nobody's going to buy a trash bag to put a recyclable.
That's the idea.
Maybe, well, I would hope not, but you never know.
I think he's talking about contamination, more about the contamination thing. I thought, that's how I, that's how I.
Rick, did I answer your question?
You did, thank you very much.
Okay, and have you got your barrel fixed?
I I have not, but I haven't called, it's just been kind of crazy recently, but I I certainly will do that.
Yeah, reach out to Dave Miller at DPW and he'll take care of you.
Thank you very much.
Any more trash issues, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for participating.
Yeah, thanks.
And I see Ash, you have your hand up, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, Ash.
I already sent note, the Sustainability Committee spent some time talking about this. I'm not sure that we fully understood all aspects of the problem, because we were reacting to to an ask that was relatively short. Short time period for us to to fully appreciate the problem. We did spend some time talking about the fact that this might be an opportunity, if you're going to go through a rate increase, to genuinely look at how we can rework the waste stream, right? So so the note I sent you to the Select Board, you know, certainly talked about composting and and maybe encouraging composting. I I I did wonder, Michael, you spent a lot of time right now talking about scenarios. Typical scenarios that I've I've looked at, you know, you can assume something like, you know, as long as you're covering eighty to ninety percent of your fixed cost. You reduce the risk of your variability than than potentially going so low that 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 you end up in a deficit, right? So a model that maybe compensates based on fixed cost at being, you know, eighty percent covered by the by the standard fee. And then the rest of it really going on, going on bags, but maybe even overcharging for the bags, which I know is going to be extremely unpopular. But then providing a service like curbside composting or something like that, that offsets it. And potentially also looking at at reducing the the number of times we do pick up, because at the end of the day, trash doesn't smell if it doesn't have organic matter. And if we effectively address the organic part of it through composting, you know, you usually can go two weeks, three weeks. My own household, we use one small trash bag once a month. And everything else is either recycled or composted. You know, it changes behavior significantly. And and that might be something to just consider. My 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 challenge to the Select Board would be, and the Sustainability Committee would be happy to work with with the Select Board and and with you, Michael, obviously, to to ideate on this a little bit. I know we probably have a very little amount of time to do it. On on what might be other strategies so that we actually change the the conversation? And and maybe redirect the conversation at some level so that we can augment the service while increasing the cost of trash, maybe, or trash disposal, maybe augment that or or mitigate that a little bit at least. By by offering maybe an alternate service offering that 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 then creates the right desirable, sustainable behavior. I I think the rest of the conversation, you you guys were spot on, so I I won't, I won't waste your time by 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 just repeating that. Thanks.
Ash, I think, you know, the, so the curbside composting program, I think that that is something that we would love to to put in place. There's two challenges with that. Number one is the capacity of the haulers and the ability to handle a townwide composting service like that. There are not many that can do that. The three that expressed interest in servicing Ashland, you know, we did ask them about the feasibility of doing a curb, a townwide curbside composting program. They couldn't do it from a capacity standpoint. Then there's also a cost, you know, there's a significant cost to it. I think, you know, Boston is doing a pilot program with that. I think that started earlier or late in twenty twenty-two. I think Arlington and maybe Cambridge have have tried to do something. I think Watertown might have a pilot program that's coming for a limited amount of residents. But those those are communities that have, that, you know, generate a lot of or get a lot of revenue, either through state or federal aid or through taxes. And are willing to go through through higher fees for that. So something that we've got to keep on our radar screen, but I don't, I don't think the market has necessarily caught up with the the necessity in addition to the demand for that.
Sorry, Michael, if I may, if I may just respond, if that's okay with the board. I know Watertown does have it, we've actually been talking to a couple of folks and and connecting Samantha with that. So so maybe you could take that one offline and 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 figure out, you know, how they did it. We we specifically had a discussion on Weston yesterday, one, the the Sustainability Manager of Weston, I think, has recently moved to Ashland. And she's doing some work, grad work, Courtney. And and she actually pointed us towards a few grants that that were leveraged. So I think there is at least some avenues there. And and I would imagine that something like Black Earth, which is already doing, you know, curbside composting in Ashland. You know, would 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 certainly, I know NIDIC leveraged them very recent, very recently to run a program of their own as well. So so there's certainly that optionality. Again, I I I'm not familiar enough, to be fair, with the with the commercials of this, because we haven't looked at it from a commercial perspective. And and you may very well be be spot on that that it's, you know, given the cost increases we're talking about, that that it's too onerous. I I would just hate to lose the opportunity to rethink this and and just solve the problem in the same way that we probably would have solved it seven years back. You know, especially given our stated goals. So so I'd just like to encourage us to maybe keep an open mind and 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 again, I appreciate the fact that this is probably something you guys need to vote on by February. So, you know, happy to to put a lot more effort into the research required here and then then let's see what we land with. And and I'd certainly love to see the scenario, you know, from our perspective, adding variability and adding cost to to something like bags or or something else. You know, and this is me as a as a private citizen as well, really, right, thinking through it, is is more equitable in the sense of, you know, people who are generating trash, they're not paying for the trash. Rather than it being in the fixed fee portion of it, right? And then again, you have to cover the fixed cost, so that's what I'd love to to explore, you know, I think, but that's something the Select Board is already asking you for.
Yep, so thank you, Ash, I I, we appreciate that. Samantha was at our last Select Board meeting talking about the the composting program and just for folks that are watching, you know, we do have a program with Black Earth. In conjunction with Holliston and the. and the prices for the, we hit the five hundred household level with, with Black Earth and so the prices have recently decreased. Sam was saying that she's done some analysis where, you know, basically if, if you use, you know, three trash bags a week, if you, you know, basically if you're reducing the trash bags that you're using through Black Earth, it basically will, will, um, you know, subsidize the cost. So, you know, when we talk about the cost of, of composting, you know, I mean, Ash, I'm impressed that you guys use one trash bag a month. I mean, that's like, a small one. Like, we're, we're down to one trash bag per two weeks and I think that that's like, uh, I, I think that's a huge victory in our, in our household. But, um, but, you know, I agree with you that anything we can do to, to increase the number of folks that, that are composting, that will reduce the amount of trash bags and, and therefore, um, you know, i- it's, it's, it's kind of a win-win situation all the way around, in my opinion, but, um, but thank you. We appreciate your, your comment.
Can I add one thing before we leave this subject? So I was talking to Michael a little bit about this and, and we've discussed it a little bit and I just wanted to add on to Ash's comment that we, you know, during this interim period, look seriously at going to, would it be beneficial to go to once every two weeks? You know, maybe that's one of the alternatives. You know, I, there's some unknowns. How would, would people, you know, would it be an issue for people? For Ash, it's not. For me, it's not, but maybe that's not true for everyone. Would it have savings, cost savings? And would it maybe give people another incentive for recycling if it's once every two weeks? And maybe in terms of labor issues, maybe it'll be less for somebody like Waste Management. They don't need as many staff. So, you know, I'd like to try to explore that. And maybe not, as you said, today in this near-term decision, but maybe take time over the next year to kind of see if that's a viable alternative, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I know of, uh, a few communities that do trash every week and recycling every other week. I don't know if too many communities that do recycling every week and trash every other week. So that's one thing.
Well, would it be one week do trash and one do, I mean, I, I know one of the things they did was they purposely went to trucks that could do both. And early on, there were times where it was like, it was being mixed. So now they're doing better with the trucks that take the trash and the recycle. But would it, could it be the kind of thing, and I was thinking the same thing as Rob, is, you know, as Ash said, instead of every week, is it every other week? Right? And, and not one week trash, one week recycle, because that means they're still sending a truck out. But instead of four, you know, every week, it's every other week, your trash and recycle goes out. The first and third week of the month, the second and fourth week of the month, something like that. It, and, I mean, unless you have an issue of where you store your trash and your recycle, whether you have, whether you put two bags out at the curb or four bags out at the curb or one bag out at the curb, whether you do it once a week or, you know, every week or every other week. I mean, that could be possible too, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something that we can look at. It's, it's not that simple, but there's.
No, I, I understand that. It's never simple.
So, so a company like Waste Management, um, they have, they service a number of different towns, right? And so they schedule things in such a way that, you know, certain trucks are available at certain periods and they have it built in and their schedule works that way. I mean, it's, um, you know, so that, i- it's a little bit more complicated than that.
I, I get that, right? Because if you go every two weeks, I mean, I know for us, there are some times our recycle bin is filled in a week. If we had to go two weeks, it might be a little bit harder. It's not most weeks, but.
But like, if, if you have a driver that, so you have employed, so you've employed and you have based that on certain amount of hours each week, right?
I see what you're saying. Okay.
And so if that gets cut in half and they don't have another community to put that driver in.
To do the alternate weeks, I see.
Is that driver gonna be?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to hear what they, how they respond.
It's worth asking the question.
Yeah, I think, I think certainly, I, I think also, you know, talking about going to trash every other week, we should get a, a lot of public input in that, just because I'm, I know how people aren't really happy when they have to keep their trash over a weekend.
Right.
So, um.
Yeah, but that's because the expectation was that it was gonna get picked up.
It's unexpected.
And now it's not. So now they have to bring it, bring it back in and.
I think, I think it's good to, to.
Always good to ask the questions.
Yeah, we definitely need some public input before we'd make any major changes to the, to the system like that.
So, no, this is a good discussion, so, and I appreciate it.
So, we'll, we'll have some, um, more numbers and things to look at at our next meeting and then we'll plan to hopefully have enough information to take a vote at that meeting.
Possible to get the information sooner rather than later?
Yeah.
As, you know, we received it in backup, which is fine, uh, but, you know, just.
We'll get it to you as soon as we can.
Okay, fair enough.
Good, thank you.
And thank you, Brittany, for, for joining us tonight, too.
Thank you, Britt.
Thanks. Okay, so, um, unless anyone else has any trash, trash talking, we're good?
Ash, you're done with the trash.
Okay, we're done with the trash talking. Okay, moving on, um, our next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
So move. Second?
Uh, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Greaves' eye.
Mitchell, aye.
Share, aye.
Manjani, aye.
Kinsman, aye. That passes five zero. Moving on to priority project update downtown.
Yeah, so downtown, a couple of different things are going on, as anybody who's driven down Main Street will tell you. So they are currently in the process of jacking underneath the tracks. And so what they are doing right now is they are, you know, they've dug two big holes where they basically pour a, a platform where they can place their drilling equipment and they'll drill through underneath the tracks and, um, you know, put the sheathing through there and then the conduit will go through there and then they'll, um, close things up. So we had originally anticipated that that would be done by the end of twenty twenty-two. But what happened is when we did the initial dig, uh, we had groundwater that was higher than what was expected. So we had to go through and we had to engineer a plan that, you know, how to take care of that groundwater and then pump it out. So we're back on track. Um, you know, it, i- it's unfortunate because, you know, I'd put something in local town pages about the fact that construction was gonna wind down over the winter based on what we had heard from Mast dot and, uh, you know, what we knew in early December. But, uh, so that's turned out not to be true. So limitations of print media, uh, certainly, certainly have been, uh, exposed there. And then, uh, one other thing, well, a couple of the things, I'm sorry. So anytime you put new pavement down, you don't wanna cut into it, right, for a while? But unfortunately, ten to sixty Main Street, they had an issue with their ejector pump that goes into the sewer, sewer line. So we ended up having to, um, basically cut a five-by-five section out of the road on Main Street and basically do the repair. They'll, um, fill it, they'll do the patch job, um, you know, obviously to make the road drivable. But what they'll do is they'll come back over when the weather warms up and they'll just do something kind of, they'll redo it and do something called infrared, uh, infrared the seams, which really kind of makes the seams seamless disappear. So.
Is Rich Gordon footing the bill for that?
Uh, GIOSO is actually gonna foot the bill for it. So, um, it turns out, it looks like, it's hard to determine exactly where the fault is, but GIOSO's owning up to it and saying, okay, we're responsible for it.
Michael, just one thing on the, when we do the detours around Town Hall, I mean Downtown, it might be good, you know, like people go, you know, go to Cherry Street and then down, um, Tilton to continue on, um, Pleasant Street.
Right, right.
It would be helpful to have, uh, traffic control at that intersection because what happens when you're coming out of Tilton, it can be very difficult to take a left because of all the traffic. You know what I'm saying? It would, might help things, sometimes when there's not a lot of traffic from downtown, it's not an issue. But when you have your usual flow and you're detouring people, it'd be good to have somebody out there controlling the traffic or stopping to let people out of Tilton, because it can get back up all the way to Park Road and down, especially in the more, you know, the morning rush hour when I'm trying to make the train, for example.
Okay. Yeah, that's something we can look into for sure.
Sometimes it's helpful to have somebody outpost. There was one, once there was someone there and that was very helpful.
Yeah, it might be one of those situations where it's subject to availability, you know, the people.
Right, because later in the day, it's not an issue, because I go around it to make the left to go to stuff in South Borough and it's not an issue.
Right. But it's that rush hour time, especially when the big trucks are coming through.
And buses.
Yep. That's right, the school buses as well.
Yeah, so the other thing at downtown, it's, it's not like related to the downtown project, but it's related to Mill Pond. I don't know if you've noticed.
Yeah, they're working there today.
Yeah, the observation platform next to Ocean House. So that is being replaced. So what they've done is they've, they've taken up the, um, the rotted boardwalk section. And so that's exposed, the old sluice way, sorry about that, that was used to generate power for the mill building.
Oh, wow.
So that's exposed. So what they're, but structurally, that's not in really good shape. So what they're doing is they're putting, uh, flowable fill into that sluice way. They will.
Excuse me, what kind of fill?
Flowable.
Flowable fill.
Yeah, so, so you got rocks in there right now, big rocks in there right now, and then that goes in and kind of fills in, fills in the gaps. And then what they will do is they'll go back through and they're gonna use, I don't know if you've seen like, um, grass pavers. It's essentially hexagonal, you know, pieces that you put out there and they'll be filling that in with pea gravel, but they're gonna leave the old granite, um, sides of the sluice way exposed.
Oh, cool. Okay. Nice.
A good path. And then they're gonna redo the observation.
So the observation deck will be built similar, same construction as the, uh, as the bridge?
Yeah, correct, same material.
Same material. Okay. Nice.
Nice.
So it'll, it'll look good. Lighting? No, I mean, it, it's.
I'm teasing.
I know. I know. Yeah, I've been so, I was so disappointed with the lights on the bridge and how they've been vandalized already.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, there's about eight of them that are, the caps are missing. So, so that's, uh, downtown. The, the other thing is the striping. The striping just has not, was not good. So, um, GIOSO acknowledges that and will come back during the spring and do that better. Yeah.
Better to do it in the spring than, than try to do it right now with all the salts and sand and crap.
Yeah, they're, yeah, GIOSO's really disappointed with their sub. So that's downtown. With the Public Safety Building, we're still, you know, generally in the same situation that we've been in before, which is we're waiting on the, on the doors.
Tracks and trolleys.
Yeah, the tracks and trolleys first for the, uh, reconfigured doors to make them operational, but then also ordering the, um, and getting the, the, we'll call them the real doors, actually, the doors that meet the specs. We're still working on that.
And no timeframe for either one of those right now?
It's, no. I, I think we've, yeah, we've learned.
Not to, not to commit a timeframe.
So, so I have a question. If we're waiting on the trucks and trolleys, the tracks and trolleys for the current door and we've ordered the new doors, the correct doors, I mean, is there any chance that we're gonna get the correct doors? And hopefully those are gonna be with the correct tracks and trolleys or before we get?
That's, that's why we're not speculating on timeframe at this point.
That could very well happen, Yolanda.
Yes.
It could, just the way things are going and the experience that we've had with these, these doors.
Yeah.
So, but that, that also brings, when we talk about public safety, you know, we're talking about vacating the Main Street buildings and the Cedar Street buildings. And so we've talked about how are we going to look at repurposing the, um, you know, the, uh, old police and fire station? So we've gone through an RFI process. We've talked about that. So we'll be doing a forum next week.
Tuesday or Wednesday? Okay.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. Um, and, uh, so we'll go through the information that we received in terms of people that have expressed interest. But what I found has been just as informative and important is the feedback that we've received from people who were potentially interested in the property but chose not to submit an expression of interest and some of the limitations that they had. So hopefully that'll help form a, a discussion that, you know, we can utilize to help craft an RFI moving forward.
So you see, some of these people may come to the forum as opposed to just general public that is interested in the reuse? Is that?
No, no, we've got feedback from them and that's something that will prove, yeah.
I just, before you got off the public safety issue, I, I, I didn't read your last newsletter, but did you give an update in that? Uh, I have to, no.
I, nothing, yeah.
And I know everybody may not agree on this, but I think it's helpful to at least repeat the kind of information we talk about at our meetings in some of your public communications. So people will know, yeah, we know it's an issue. We're working on it. This is the general outlines of the problem. And we're working on it and we're not just, it's not just sitting there for no good reason, you know?
Yeah. I, I think there's, there's a point to that. And so what we have to do is balance that out with kind of where we are. Legally is probably not the right term, but, but we are in the process of e- exacting penalties on the contractor and trying to come to a resolution here, um, with regards to the doors and, you know, making, making sure that the town is made whole.
Right. And I think that's a helpful statement to make, not just at these meetings, but in places where people routinely might hear it without scheduling themselves to go watch the Select Board to see what they're doing about this, you know?
I mean, if the board wants me to do that, I'm happy to put something together and, and put it out there.
Well, I, I think just in your next Friday email to, to Rob's point, you put it out every Friday, a quick, just similar to what you just told us about the, about the Public Safety Building, right? Because we're, we have issues on the doors, we can't move into it.
I don't see, you know, this is all, you know, whatever is public information. I mean, we did, we did, uh, enter into executive session not too long ago to talk about, you know, any potential legal issues. And, uh, so I think we need to be sensitive about that. So, you know, I think anything that you would, you know, state has been stated numerous times already. And, you know, if the board is, you know, wants you to respeak it again in a newsletter, so be it. But, you know, again, it's just repeating what we've said numerous times over the past, you know, several months.
It sometimes takes someone seven times to see a message, to understand it and actually read it. So.
Seven times is generous, Yolanda.
Well, I'm just saying that there's, there's nothing wrong with putting.
Is that an average seven times? So some people it takes two times and some people like eleven or so?
Very possibly.
Okay.
So would we move forward with like, because what we had done with the, the, um, the current fire and police station was an RFI, which was non-binding and it was just a request for information. Would we, following this public forum, would we actually put out a, um, like sort of a binding RFP before we kind of have a, you know, a move? Because, because we're still kind of waiting to see when that property is gonna be available.
Yeah, I think we would move forward with an RFP. I, I think it would be prudent to, to do that.
Based on the feedback and the review of the information from the, at the forum next week.
Right, so the forum will help, the information that we gather from the forum will help utilize, help, will be utilized to help craft the RFP.
And that's getting, um, recorded, right, the forum? Because I, I know I can't make it on Tuesday. Okay. And, because I wanna, I do wanna look at it and see the response that people give.
And the reason we're doing that now is because if there is something that, if we do have someone that does complete an RF, RFP that wants to, to do work on that site, that would need to go to town meeting and so that would be, we're, we're trying to time it so we'd be able to have that inform a town meeting, correct?
Yeah, if it makes, if it makes sense, like if there's a, a time pressure.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's like, that's like three steps ahead of where we are, so I, I get that, but.
Just another question. Have we ruled out any particular uses? I think at one time you mentioned that, no residential.
Yeah, residential was excluded as part of the RFI.
Why was that? I mean.
Um, just because, well, there just doesn't seem to be an appetite for residential downtown. And plus, these are, are primary, you know, commercial locations.
The reason I bring it is up because I just read a story about an old firehouse converted to condominiums and red, I think it was in Northampton or someplace like that. And, you know, so people are doing it and it, whether, whether to your point, it's more of a location for commercial.
Yeah, I think we would like to see commercial, but, you know, just to give you a little bit of a, a sneak preview. I mean, one of the thing, one of the pieces of feedback that we did get was that it would probably be more attractive to more people if we were able to include a small residential element to it. But I just, I just think that's a slippery slope, yeah.
I don't know. It's not a bad, I don't know.
You know, I, I was, I had this listed as part of my board report, but since we're talking about it now, you know, I think that, you know, as far as I'm. You know, I, I was, I had this listed as part of my board report, but since we're talking about it now, you know, I think that, you know, as far as I'm aware, the, um, you know, whatever interest has been, uh, indicated at this point, um, hasn't really generated any serious path to a proposal, as far as I know. Whether it was individuals coming to look at the properties for, let's say, a restaurant, um, or whatever, whatever that may be, be the case. And maybe there's valid reasons for that from, from the develop, from that community, from the business community, because the footprint of the, of the fire station is such. Uh, the police station, the condition of the police station is such, and maybe we do need to rethink the, you know, what we allow there. And, uh, it, it seems, uh, that, you know, I think the worst case scenario for me is that we just make it a parking lot. You know, I think it's, and, and so we may need to rethink the restrictions that we're putting on it. Not, not, and that's speaking about the historical component about the fire station, because I think that can be, that can be put into a project, clearly. But I think with the residential component, I think we may need to rethink that, that, that potential. And, and I'm gonna relate it to, uh, there's a property in Natick, uh, where the fire was, two thousand nineteen, that block. So that's an empty block now.
Oh wow.
And in fact, the developer, the guy that bought it is calling it the block, right? And he, his original premise was to create this kind of pop-up, right, business opportunity on the ground floor. And then on the upper floor, put in art studios, and his concept was to make it very reasonable, uh, rent-wise. So he's been going back and forth with the town for quite, well, since basically two thousand nineteen. And now he's at the point where he's modifying the project. He wants to put in a, a third story to have living space on it, and he would consider putting a fourth story on for other living space as well. So I, I think, to me, the takeaway is, you know, that we have, we have a, a difficult property there, I think, to, to redevelop. This property in Natick is, it's completely flat and it's ready to get built on. We, doesn't have the kind of restrictions that we've placed on ours. So, you know, I, I think, uh, you know, I, I, it'll be interesting to see what comes out in the forum, whether we learn anything new or different. I mean, I think everybody wants, you know, whatever it might be, a restaurant, or an art center, or, um, wha- whatever the case may be. I mean, but that's, you know, you have to have somebody willing to invest in that clearly, right? So, uh, just an observation, and, you know, I'll be interested like Yolanda to see what, what they, you know, what kind of feedback we get from the forum.
Just your, you know, regarding your comments, Steve, on what's going on in Natick, I think for a lot of developers, they're hearing that we need more housing, right? So, and I haven't followed the project in Natick, I saw it go, you know, I heard about the fire and, but it's, it's a possible thing where they're like, okay, Natick wants more housing, so there's already three-story housing in that downtown area. If you look at next to the bagel table, that's a newer block that was put in. So three stories, if the top story is housing, that would be a benefit for Natick, it would give them their numbers, and we want people to be living downtown. So to your point, maybe we need to look at that, but I think it's gonna be good to, you know, hear from people and, and what they think about the fire. And, and maybe the fire station stays the same way, but we do something different with the police station.
I don't, you know, I'm not advocating for three stories or four stories, anything of that nature.
No, 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 I understand that, I'm just for that.
You know, that this parcel may be difficult to really do something that, uh, that we kind of, uh, you know, kind of this magical thinking of, of having, you know, somebody come in and put a restaurant there, you know? I, the other thing about Natick, they did a downtown master plan, uh, in two thousand sixteen. It was very interesting because they did a, a number of public forums, and one of the things that came back from the forums is, is residents would like to see a, a market, a supermarket in downtown Natick. And so they did an analysis of that, and, you know, the, for a supermarket to come into an area, it has to be X number of square feet to make economic sense. And they have to have X number of sales per square feet to make economic sense. And what they discovered when Natick did this analysis is that they were basically seven hundred people short of being able to support a supermarket. So, you know, it, it, you know, you, you have to, you know, I don't know how you talk about, you know, increasing commercial businesses in downtown and expect them to be supported without having a population there to support them.
Right.
The usual formula, yeah.
But, you know, I, I think that point's well taken, but I think it's also important to look at, you know, basically the totality of downtown. And so you've got, you know, potentially an additional two hundred units coming online. You know, Homer, which, you know, went before the planning board, that's potentially, you know, another twenty-nine units. I don't know what that critical mass is, but I think, you know, you have to, you have to look at that property, not necessarily just in a vacuum, but in terms of the whole downtown and the whole scale. That being said, the, the, the reality of the market, right? So we can do feasibility study after feasibility study, and we can express what we want there till we're blue in the face. But the market drives what goes into certain places. It's not zoning, it's economics. And, 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 you know, just quite simply, to get a loan on a commercial property in, in Ashland is almost impossible, because banks aren't confident that it's going to generate the revenue that it needs to pay back the bank loan. Just like when you go to a mortgage, they wanna see what your income is, so they know that you can pay it back. So what happens is that residential component, they're all, banks know that that's gonna get filled, they know that rent's gonna get paid. So, you know, usually you have to marry a residential component to a commercial thing, uh, and usually weighed heavily towards a residential just to finance the renovation of a certain building. So, and so maybe ultimately that's what has to come down to this place, but maybe not.
And maybe the, you know, the request for proposal needs to be, uh, flexible in that sense.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be, I'm interested for the forum.
What type's the forum, is it seven?
It's seven.
It's strictly, uh, uh, virtual. It's hybrid. Hybrid, so you'll be here?
Yeah.
So it's, it's located here, it's not at the community center?
I believe it is here, um, just, I just wanna make sure.
This is the best place, if you're gonna do hybrid, this is the place to do it, this is really the only place.
Yeah, 'cause the, the owl is great, but it's not, uh, it's not the best.
Have we, have we ever done a hybrid?
Ben and cheer while Michael is checking.
It's here at six.
Oh, it's six, okay, six o'clock.
Go ahead, Joe.
Well, Michael was checking his, uh, calendar. I'd just like to quickly say something with respect to this, the RFPs and, and what potential use for the properties, uh, be it the fire station and or the, uh, the old police station. Uh, when these discussions were started close to two and a half years ago, there was a big discussion, there was a big concern about having additional parking downtown. And there, there was quite an agreement that the fact that the police station would be knocked down, one, because it was a sick building, and it was built in a way that was not suitable for, uh, anybody that needed to do some major repairs and some structural work to make it fit any potential use, uh, be it commercial, restaurant, residential, whatever. Let's not forget that there is a, an underground stream that goes right between the two buildings, you know, underground. So, you know, I remember there was many discussions with respect to that, and I know a lot of people are looking to have additional parking. So let's not forget that that was part of a discussion that happened over two and a half years ago, when this thing, when this whole project started. And I think it's being, uh, lost in the shuffle about, uh, adding more housing downtown, which I don't think we need.
Joe, I, you know, I think you get a, you, you bring up a good point, and I think, you know, the purpose of the forum is so people can express the things like you expressed. And so we can incorporate that into any kind of RFP that we put out there. So maybe, you know, one of the things that we do is we give more weight to a proposal that includes some kind of public parking element to it, right? So, so that's how that feedback that you just gave can get incorporated into the overall RFP, so.
Well, what about, what about talking to the folks that, that are joined next door to the, um, one nineteen Main Street? And talk to Berkshire Group, and see if they wanted to, uh, purchase some of that property to put additional, uh, senior housing in, right next door, right downtown, which is what we're hoping to do.
I mean, i- if that, if you think that that is consistent with the goals that you're trying to achieve for the property, you know, I don't think.
You know, you, you're not, you're not four stories high, you're not five stories, uh, you're not looking, you know, disrespectful to the downtown area, especially if it's the same, uh, construct as, uh, one nineteen Main Street is.
So you're referring to Ashland House, Joe?
Ashland House, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, which is one nineteen Main Street, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'm sure most of us will probably be at the forum next week, and then we'll, we'll plan to put it on our agenda, our next agenda, and discuss it more in detail.
Follow up to the forum, okay.
So, um.
It'll be good, I'm looking forward to it, so. Okay, all right, just moving on to Mendez School, um, so Yolanda's got a couple of updates. I did get a, um, I did sign a, a change from the MSBA, increasing our eligible reimbursable amount, which was, uh, good news. I think it was about seven hundred thousand dollars. And then we also got bids from our technology bidders, uh, that came in better than what we'd anticipated, so that's good news too. I don't know if you.
Yeah, so at the meeting last night, we did go through the proposals, the responses we got to the proposal for technology. And with that, we did vote for, to, uh, engage with Hub Technologies. And then we also went through some changes, and our change ratio is point three, and we're forty-eight percent through our project. So we're at a really good ratio in regards to those changes and where we're at. Uh, they are gonna be working on Saturdays to stay on schedule. And at times right now, with all the various, uh, trades that are in there, they're having over a hundred people at a time in the building or on, you know, or working on the outside of the building, so they're, they're really, uh, at one point, they're about ten days behind, but now they're getting themselves back on track because basically the day that school ends, they have to be able to start demoing the old buildings, because this is still on target to open for end of August or September, um, of this year for, for, uh, use. But we saw some furniture, look, furniture design and some paint design and some interior stuff. And we, as a committee, are doing a walkthrough on February fourth at nine AM.
So that change ratio that you were talking about, does that mean, like, that they will use less of their, like, contingency?
Yes, so it's based on the contingency funds, yeah.
Okay, that's good news, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, but it was good.
Yeah, so Yolanda, the, uh, the scheduled opening date for school hasn't changed, because it was my understanding that it was pushed back a, a week to make sure that the school was ready?
I have not heard what the scheduled open date is for, for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, the school committee was having a meeting just before our meeting, but I haven't heard any follow-up or change. I don't know that they have voted a new, I don't know that they've voted the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar as of yet.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it, on Mendez.
With Valentine, Yolanda and I met with Carl to talk about, uh, you know, a, a future meeting with a potential CR holder, conservation restriction holder. So we kind of ironed out a few things, some of the talking points that we wanted to, um, make sure that we go in with and, um, kinda be on the same page of that. I thought it was a, a productive discussion.
It was a good meeting, I think, between the three of us, we, we missed you, Brandy, but I think just having the three of us was actually beneficial, it was a good conversation. And now we're just waiting to hear back from this potential CR holder to, for next steps.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple additional things that we, we need, I think we need to do, you know, on, on our end. So for example, the, um, you know, the, the contamination issue that's on the, on the property. We need to, um, you know, basically have a, a, a handle on that before we go in, but, um, it's, uh, it's not, it's, it's not a major issue. Let's just, let's just put it that way, I don't want people to get concerned or anything like that. We just need to basically determine if, if we're gonna do, um, to what.
Yeah, that's the old arsenic, right?
Yeah, it's, it's arsenic.
Well, thank you guys for.
Yeah, very good, good.
Yeah, same here, that's great news.
Good to make progress.
Going ahead, yeah.
And, and then I don't really have anything on the Warren District, so. So that's it for priority projects.
Okay, you wanna move on to town manager reports?
Sure, um, so this weekend, we do have the MMA conference, I know some of you are going. I wanna say that usually it's a big day on Friday, because the governor announces their, their budget numbers at the same day. But considering, uh, this is Governor Healy's first term, uh, first-term governors get an extension until February. So unfortunately, we won't have the, the state aid numbers coming out of that, out of that. But there's a, a number of good, um, you know, good workshops and stuff, so it's pretty, uh, pretty interesting, so I think we'll have a good time. So item B is discussing, uh, needed repairs on the town hall roof. So Doug Scott and Jeff Bell have, you know, discovered a, a potential issue up on the roof. And, you know, to really kind of summarize it the best I can, um, when the town hall was renovated, there should have been certain bracing put in place to account for the fact that it's now gonna be insulated, and so you won't have the temperature changes and fluctuations that we used to have for a hundred and fifty years. And then also, uh, bracing to account for some of the weight from, uh, some of the HVAC equipment and, and things like that up there. Unfortunately, that was not done, so what we've had happen is, is some beams and everything have twisted. And so that has opened up a gap between the top plate and the roof. Now, it doesn't sound like that's a gap that we're going to be able to close, but what we are looking at doing is putting something in place to keep it from getting any worse. Because, you know, if it gets worse, you, you know, run the potential of losing the roof, so.
So you've got boards that are twisted and you have a gap, does a gap run right down the length of the?
Not the full length of it, not like the full length of town hall.
Not the full length, and, and is it just on one side, or is it just on one side? So, so there's a gap that's gonna stay there, in essence?
Yeah.
And it doesn't get filled?
Um, there might be something that we can do to kind of backstop it and everything, but we're not gonna be able to basically, you know, close it back up with joinery.
And it's not, you know, rain is not an issue with this, uh?
Not right now, because of the eaves and the overhang.
Okay.
So.
So what is the, what's it, what did, what's the solution entail?
So first we'll need to do a little bit of engineering, have, you know, a structural person look at it, and then we'll have a much better, or much more specific idea of what the fix would be. Again, right now, all I, you know, all I can tell you is that we'll have to put some kind of bracing in place, but I couldn't tell you where it goes exactly, you know?
And after the engineer takes a look at it, then we'd probably have to put it out to bid, to get, to get it fixed, to see what we're looking at for, from a cost perspective.
Yeah, so we'll have to, you know, look at readjusting capital or something like that, or ARPA funds, Rob.
ARPA, downtown, right?
Yeah.
So, do we, do we have access to the attic area that we're seeing, okay?
You're right, right, on the other side of that little wall.
On the other side of that, okay, so they've gone up and they noticed the gap, and then they went up and found these, these twisting boards?
Yeah, looked at it a little more closely.
Okay. So timeframe?
Um, I, I think we'll try to get an engineer there probably within the next month, so. But anyway, just wanted to, you know, let you know, 'cause it's unexpected, for sure.
Joe, did you have a comment?
I just had a question for Michael, uh, is that gap big enough for, uh, you know, animals to come in and infiltrate the, uh, town hall attic area?
Uh, probably, um, you know, as you know, some of those critters don't necessarily, uh, need that much space.
Right.
So I would, I would assume so.
So Mike, we have to put something in the gap so that they can't get in?
I'm thinking like a fencing or something like that, yeah.
What I've been told is that it would be really difficult to do that, but maybe we could do something like a backstop or something like that.
Fencing or screening or something, just to, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, like I said, uh, one of those unexpected things that comes through. Okay, the next one, so, um, Chief Roby has been successful in getting grant funds to update our comprehensive emergency management plan, so that is a, a plan that really tries to account for any type of disaster situation or weather event or something to that, to that effect and, you know, not only how we respond to it from an emergency perspective, but what needs to happen in terms of, um, helping the public, you know, warming stations, things of that nature, it hasn't been updated in, in a while. And as you know, the town has grown, we've got different, um, concerns nowadays with climate change and, you know, municipal vulnerability that we didn't have twenty years ago, uh, with, you know, hundred-year storms now happening like every one or two years. So it's a good, it's, it's a good time to update that and put that together.
Did we finish our, um, our municipal vulnerability plan that we did a couple of years ago? Did that get completed?
We did, that did get completed, yeah. So Evan, Evan really, and, um, Emma worked really hard on that.
Okay.
Um, so next, uh, the board had asked, just, Brandy and I had talked about just, uh, kind of just giving you an idea of things before the planning board. Uh, as you know, they're very, very busy, um, they've got a lot of applications in front of them. Um, what they talked about at their last meeting, so they had three oh one Pond Street on the agenda, but they had requested a continuance. Uh, it was the initial meeting with, uh, you know, forty-nine Homer, um, and that, that project, didn't get a chance to review all of the, the video and everything, so I'm not, you know, not necessarily sure what the take was on that. But, you know, I know there's a lot of interest in that and seeing how that goes.
And that is, um, you said twenty-nine units and how much commercial? Do you, do you have that info? I don't know, if you don't have it, it's okay.
Ninety-four hundred square feet of, uh, front spacing retail place.
This is Homer Ave.
Mm-hmm, twenty-nine units.
Michael, what's, what's three oh one Pond, is that, uh?
Three oh one Pond is Shaw's, is Shaw's development.
And did they do their initial, they did their initial, um, presentation in front of the planning board?
I believe so, yes.
So, and they're subject to the sewer moratorium, but not the building moratorium?
Correct, and actually that goes for, um, thank you for bringing that up, that actually goes for Homer as well.
Okay, so these, so these folks can go through the planning board process, they just can't build? They wouldn't be able to build through that sewer moratorium, okay.
Correct. Um, so.
When is the sewer moratorium ups?
I believe it's, it's due to be up in March, but we haven't really been able to do the studies that we had wanted to do.
So we should probably sooner rather than later got, get it on an agenda to extend that?
Um, yeah, we can, yes, we should.
If it's, if it's due to be up in March, it's now, we have two meetings in February, and if we haven't been able to do the studies, I would say if we look to extend it, we should then prioritize and put into our schedule doing the studies.
Yeah, I think, um, obviously that would be ideal, I think we just have to look at everything else that we've got going on and just kind of see where it fits in, in terms of the priority. So we might have to give up a few things.
But lacking those studies, we may extend it.
Correct.
So is, is Homer Ave and three oh one Pond the only projects that are in front of the planning board that would be subject to the sewer moratorium, but not the building moratorium?
Good question.
Cause.
So many of them.
Cause there, I mean, everything else was filed before the sewer moratorium, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, because the next thing that was on the agenda was, um, was three ninety-nine Union Street, and that's the, the Starbucks proposal.
Okay.
At one thirty-five, and commercial projects were exempted from the sewer moratorium, so.
Right.
And where is that in their process, three ninety-nine Homer, uh, Union, the Starbucks process?
So they had a discussion, um, obviously with the planning board, um, I, I was able to jump on a little bit for that one. I think, um, so the planning board had some concerns with, with some design elements and had asked the applicant to go back and, and review some of that and bring it back before the board, so.
This is, they're doing site plan review, there's no special permit that they're requesting, or is there a special?
I believe this is, uh, strictly site plan review.
Okay, so, so that's, it's just, that's good, that's good to know.
So, question though about the, uh, the drive-through. Uh, is that, is it, does the ZBA get involved with any of, of this permitting? As I always thought that drive-throughs fell under their purview?
It might, Steve, I don't know right off the top of my head if it does. Um, there have been a couple of, of projects that have gone before the ZBA and then gone before the planning, I can't remember if this is one of them.
Yeah, it's, I recall, uh, in the past, ZBA adjudicating drive-throughs. Um, and to me, the, 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 the big issue here is the drive-through, you know, the design elements, you know, that, that's one thing. Uh, but, you know, the drive-through, the what, my understanding of their proposal of the drive-through and the way they're going to filter cars in, and that's such a, you know, I mean, it's, it, that is a busy intersection. It's a busy intersection, uh, you know, clearly during rush hour when they do the bulk of their business. And, uh, but it's a busy intersection all day long. So I would think that's the biggest, the biggest hurdle.
Yeah, I, I know the planning board has certainly looked into that and they've had traffic studies and they've gone back and reviewed traffic studies. I think you gotta go with what the data tells you in that situation. Um, I mean, and there's, you know, there's a Starbucks at the intersection of Route Nine and some back road that leads into South Borough, it's in South Borough, and it's actually part of more of a complex.
It's not a drive-through though.
Yeah, it's, it's not a drive-through, but there's, there's.
Spike Tommaso's restaurant.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's not a drive-through, there is a drive-through Starbucks on Route Nine in Natick up on the hill, but that's a, it's a very deep lot, so, you know, there's, you can drive in and out, in fact, I think it's exclusively a, a drive-through.
It is, there's now a new drive-through Starbucks on Route Nine in Framingham in back of Whole Foods.
Oh, that's right.
As you're heading west on Route Nine, they took out that old car dealership, that building is still there, and then the Starbucks in there's a other building, and, you know, you take the right off of Route Nine, you go into the drive-through and you come out and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know, like, there was a, you know, it was initially presented as a specific queue length, I think based on some of the feedback from the planning board and, um, from the consultant, they've increased that queue length. I mean, it's a pretty substantial queue length, you know, I know it's a busy intersection, but I'm not, I'm not sure if it's.
I wish I liked Starbucks coffee, there's plenty of options now, I just, I don't, yeah.
There's a lot of people very excited about a Starbucks.
No doubt, absolutely.
It will be a very big thing to have a Starbucks in Ashland.
Yeah, actually somebody at the senior center was asking me today, when, when's it gonna open up?
You don't have to, you don't have to go to Hopkin Town.
Is it gonna open?
Think about it, you don't have to go to Hopkin Town, you don't have to go to South Borough, and it's a drive-through, yeah.
Well, I hope they, I hope it gets well-designed, so it's an asset to have as people come in.
I'm surprised you don't have any commentary on, on their kind of, uh, treatment of, of workers at Starbucks, their anti-union position.
Well, let's not go there, let's not go there.
Good try, Steve, good try.
There's still board reports, you know.
That's true.
So, but, so I'm glad that's.
Limiting those, cause.
I'm glad that's working.
These are the same people that, uh, spent four fifty for a cup of coffee, but yet they're complaining about the fact that we're gonna go walk uh, fifty cents on the trash free.
Okay, we're, we're, all right, we're moving, went there, we're moving forward. Thank you, Joe.
Just wanna bring it up, that's all.
Oh, point, fair point.
Yep. It's still a free country and we get to decide how we spend our money, right?
Um, there's, yeah, the other big project that they didn't have, wasn't on the agenda obviously, is ten to sixty Main Street, so we're still having conversations about that.
How is that going? Or is it not?
You know, it, it's, um, I have not been on the recent meetings, but, um, you know, I, I think the planning board's doing their due diligence and, um.
Did we all see the email from Kara Terrell pulling in either DEP or EPA regarding the plume and, and having public hearings? And how will that impact the planning board process, if at all?
Yeah, so, interestingly enough, before we got that email, um, you know, we had, we've been having discussions with the EPA. And I think, you know, obviously there's, there are valid concerns that need to be addressed. And, you know, maybe a public, public forum or some kind of, you know, public meeting, uh, is the best way to kind of discuss that. So talk about, okay, what are the, what are the dangers, you know, and the potential pathways? That, um, you know, that the plume can end up, you know, affecting people and making people sick? And then what are the, you know, so, you know, what the current activity and use limitation is? And what is being changed to make that safer and allow for residential use?
Well, we brought this up at the very first meeting, you know, our concerns about the, any environmental issues, and he was not forthcoming at that meeting.
No, I mean, I remember, I, I, I just happened to come across the AUL, you know, which was a big deal.
Yeah, to, to your point, Steve, he wasn't just, I mean, he was dismissive about the fact that there would be any environmental impact.
It was a very dismissive response, and yep, n- no, no problems, everything's been cleaned, is what he said.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And even, even, I remember, like, um, their, their, their contingency was really small for environmental impact, and that was something that we had raised too.
Meanwhile, he's got a deed restriction that was placed on him by DEP. Plus, you know, if you've been behind that building at all, it is still, you know, uh, a pretty dirty location. There's a lot of dirty industries that have been in there for years, and, you know.
Anyway, more to come.
Yeah, so it'll be, um, certainly be interesting, and then I had, uh, just a couple more things. Congressman McGovern stopped by on Friday, he stopped by and, uh, you know, met with us for forty-five, you know, fifty minutes. Uh, just basically to introduce himself, I guess he did have Ashland, Ashland was part of his district before, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it was reorganized a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, so he, um, you know, we, we talked about, you know, certain things, that certain challenges that we're facing. He, uh, he talked a lot about infrastructure money and, you know, whether it's ARPA or the Build Back Better bill and, you know, some of the concerns that he might, he has with the Republican Congress and, you know, how that could affect those funds moving forward. And, um, you know, we talked about the, you know, interesting development that we have in, in government now where, you know, it used to be we didn't have the money to do infrastructure investments, and so now all this money is flowing through, but we don't have the people to, to implement it, and so that's a challenge being faced at the federal and state and local level, so it was pretty good. I, you know, I came away, Rob was, was there, I came away from it feeling like he definitely will listen and, and advocate for things that we would like, like him to advocate for, including eight million.
He's a, he's a, he's a nice, nice man, uh, he was at, uh, the, Rob hosted a Democratic, uh, town committee barbecue, and he was there, spent, spent the whole afternoon there.
He was there for quite a while chatting with people and, I just, you know, I was very pleased to be there and representing the board and we had a long range of discussion. He was very, uh, he brought his main district guy with him, we got his contact info, and he was very involved, said, call us, you know, if you need anything, if there's projects, he wanted to know what our concerns were, what the projects were. Um, and, and as Michael said, I think the big thing, the big message I got was, you know, we've worked in Congress and the administration to get these funds out, ARPA, uh, the Inflation Reduction Act, you know, uh, infrastructure, and it's really up to you folks to get that money to work, and there's really, there's a lot left. There's like, he was, I guess, kind of somewhat critical about certain levels of government that had funding and hadn't yet distributed it. And, um, you know, and different levels of government.
Can he help out with it?
And he offered to help out, yeah.
Yes, he did.
And, um, the other concern was with the change in, uh, you know, the Republicans in Congress, there are going to be other efforts to claw that money back and, um, so the, the basic message was, we, we've done all this work, you folks have needs, go out and, you know, get working with it, get us plans, get, get, what was it, appropriate, get funds appropriated so they won't be clawed back, so that was the message. Really, I got, I mean, two things, you know, concerned and he'd help when he can, of course, some of this is not, you know, his deal, but, uh, and, but, you know, that the funding is available, so.
Well, it's good that you were there, so, yeah, appreciate that, good.
Um, and then finally, I just, uh, want to thank you all that, uh, were able to attend the fire promotion ceremony that we had. Um, I thought it was good, you know, succinct, uh, you know, um, promotions.
To the point, it was a good event.
Congratulations to Deputy Chief Morehand and Captain Boland and Lieutenant Marsinkowicz.
Yeah, yeah, good event.
Yeah, I wasn't able to make, were there pictures, did you post stuff anywhere?
Yeah, all kinds of pictures.
It was recorded and, yeah.
All kinds of pictures.
Now we're missing Ashley, so stuff isn't getting out there.
Yeah, the fire department, the fire department put stuff out there.
It's erosion all hell filled the gap.
I think it might be good at some point to have Chief Roby come to our meeting and talk to about, talk to us about these changes, because, yes, people saw the pictures, but what does that mean now that she has been put in, now that, um, Assistant Captain, Assistant Chief?
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief, um, Morehand, I think that would be good. And just let people know what our fire department is doing and how they're working and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, they're, the, the increasing calls is just.
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a good point, I, I'd be interested in seeing, I know, uh, that we've had in the past, uh, I think the last time actually was when Craig was here, a breakdown of all of the police calls and so on. I'd like to see that again, and as, as, as well as the fire department and, and so on. And, uh, you know, I think that would be, uh, certainly inform, certainly informs you as town manager as to how you apply resources.
Well, I think it would allow the, the residents to see what's going on as we start talking about our budgets and, I mean, I know all, all of these departments go and they present to FinCom, and yes, those are recorded, but not everyone watches a FinCom meeting, so if we could bring some of that to the select board meeting so that it's a little more visible, I think that would be a good thing.
You'd be surprised how many people watch those FinCom, those budget hearings.
That's good, that's good that people are watching them.
Unsurprising.
Community engagement.
Yeah, and so that's, that's all I had.
Okay.
Sounds good, sounds like we're into board reports. Joe, since, uh, since you usually go first, you are up first, my friend.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, I'm sorry my voice is, uh, starting to die on me, I apologize. Um, again, I definitely appreciated being at the, uh, the promotion ceremony and kudos to the three firefighters who were promoted. Uh, each one of them, uh, true professionals at their job, uh, and a testament to, uh, the town's apartment. And, uh, I know that, that Chief Roby is, uh, surrounding himself with good people, that's always a good thing to do. And he must have got that trade-off from, uh, from Michael Herbert, he surrounds himself with good people, so.
That's right.
That's a, that's a real good thing. I don't have any board reports, but what I do have is that, uh, we'll be meeting next, next week, uh, Traffic Study Committee, we've got, uh, three major, uh, issues that we're going to be tackling. One is the, uh, Fruit and Elliot Street intersection and the Warren School, uh, back area uh, with respect to, uh, parking and, uh, loading and storage areas, uh, so that way there is, uh, a better flow of traffic on Elliot Street, uh, during early school hours, so we'll be working on that. And, uh, the other thing is the Football Housing Trust will be meeting. We had a little, uh, bump in the road with respect to the property on, uh, Six Gilani, uh, Way, and, uh, we haven't been able to contact, uh, Bank of America, who was not returning our calls. So I believe that, uh, Mr. Greenberg will be contacting, uh, attorney me to, uh, expedite that, that conversation for us. And at that time, that's all I have, I, uh, just want to remind everybody, there is a parking ban, uh, no pa- uh, no parking overnight from the hours of two to six, and, uh, that's it. I'm glad that everybody's feeling healthy and, uh, I have set aside some money, uh, for next week, for this weekend, just in case you guys need bail money.
Are you, are you expecting us to get into trouble, Joe?
You never know, you, you, you never know.
I hope, I hope you, uh, you get better soon, Joe, have some chicken soup.
Oh, believe me.
Lots of fluids and lots of rest.
Yeah, Pristina, that's the Italian penicillin, so, yeah, we're, we're good. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thanks, Joe, Yolanda, you're up next.
Thank you, so tomorrow, two things, there is a blood drive going on at the senior center, I believe it's from twelve to five. I don't know if they're taking walk-ins, but if you have the Blood App on your phone and it is called the Blood App through Red Cross, you can make, see if they have any appointments and you can make an appointment. Uh, tomorrow night, we are having our second comprehensive plan meeting, uh, starting at six.
Very nice.
Um, we have some things, uh, we've decided to do a rotating chair rather than one chair, so Kate.
Um, we have some things, uh, we've decided to do a rotating chair rather than one chair, so Kate Jersik is our chair for tomorrow night. Uh, so there's some good things on that.
Are you guys televised, there's?
No, no. And then, uh, going to the MMA Conference, looking forward to that on Thursday, uh, Friday and Saturday. And then, um, next Thursday in the morning, Metro West Regional Collaborative has our monthly meeting via Zoom starting at eight AM. If you're interested in attending, you can go to, let me know when I can get you a link to sign up for it, because you do have to register.
What time is that?
It's eight o'clock.
At Wednesday?
Eight to nine thirty next Thursday morning. And we have six planned meetings via Zoom, well, all of our meetings, our regular meetings are via Zoom and we're going to be looking at planning our legislative breakfast and a few other events in the spring. And that's all I got.
That's everything, thanks, Yolanda, Steve, you're up next.
Uh, so just a couple of things, uh, really, it's too bad Ash isn't still on, on the, uh, the meeting. There's a, uh, the legislature or the governor, uh, uh, brought in a new building code, uh, last year. And so there's two communities that have, were the first communities to, to adopt this new code, Brookline and Watertown. And, and, and it's oriented towards getting away from fossil fuels. And if you do build something and it, it's, it's related to only new construction, so if you build something uh, under this building code and you put in, let's say, gas heat, you have to make other accommodations like solar or like extra wiring for, uh, for different purposes as, as the society gets, becomes more electrified. But it's, uh, it's interesting because, you know, like a lot of these things, there's, there's conflict, right? Conflict between the, uh, people that build and the people that support, uh, you know, sustainability.
Sure.
So that's, that's kind of a built in thing, but it's interesting, you know, I think one of the issues that, that everybody should be aware of is the impact it has on housing costs. Because a lot of these, these, uh, code changes are going to increase the cost of housing. So, you know, that is, uh, there's no, they didn't provide any facts and figures, but, you know, that seems to be, uh, but it's, it was interesting, uh, advocates, I just want to repeat one, one part of this here says, advocates said the state's ability to slash building missions deeply enough to meet climate targets depends on the mass adoption of the new code.
Wow.
So there's only two communities right now. Uh, and some worry that too many of the more than three hundred municipalities that have yet to make a decision could opt out. So Ashland may choose not to adopt this, I mean.
It's interesting that we haven't heard about, or we maybe heard about it in the past and then, but it's not like anybody's coming to us and saying, well, you guys want to adopt this or?
Well, I think it's incumbent upon this body to bring this to the town and say, do you want to adopt this?
Sustainability committee.
Well, I think in, in, in concert with sustainability, you know? So, you know, I think it goes to what actually is our commitment to sustainability here. I mean, this seems to be an obvious next step if that's where, you know, what, what the value is for, you know, part of the town's value structure, so. So that's something that I'm sure is going to come up in future meetings.
Yeah, I think we should hear about it, yeah.
Probably, you know, well beyond my shelf life here, so you, you guys can deal with it.
I'll remember that one.
So. I have an expiration date now, do I not?
You know, some people go long beyond their expiration, their expiration date.
Uh, so tomorrow, the Council on Aging, uh, has a second meeting of the month. Uh, we, uh, decided at our, uh, first meeting, uh, that, uh, and I don't believe the council has ever pursued kind of creating a strategic plan slash list of goals for the, for the, uh, for the council, so we're going to start working on that tomorrow. I guess it's considered somewhat of a retreat and.
Is Candy going to this?
Excuse me?
Is Candy going to go?
Candy's part of it, of course, yeah. She's integral to it.
Yeah.
I mean, she has, you know, I mean, you, you know, it, it, it ties together, Candy's got a, you know, should have a strategic plan for, for her area. And I think the council, and I think they, they work in concert, you know, I've done some homework on this. And some councils do create these kind of strategic or goals for, for the council. And, uh, you know, other than just meeting once a month and, and getting a director's report, so. And I think it's how, how, how can we better support the director, number one? And how can we better advocate for seniors in town, a growing demographic as we all know? You know, how can we make sure that everybody's aware of transportation options? And all of the support systems that exist and, you know, and how can we market and brand ourselves better as a, as an entity? And, you know, we only, you know, the community center itself, and you know this, Michael, only services a handful of Ashland seniors. But use that, use the center, so there's a whole other demographic out there and how do we better communicate? And get information out or get better, more participation, so that's kind of what we're going to work on tomorrow, so. And then lastly, you know, we kind of touched on it earlier a little bit, you know, we received a letter, uh, suggesting that we don't fill a position. And I, I don't want to get into specifics, it makes no difference. Uh, and I, I respect the letter, uh, respect the thought process, I'm not, you know, going to, going to critique that, but I think it raises the interesting, you know, this is, I warned you people about this last meeting, that, you know, this is my opportunity to pontificate, right, till the end of my expiration date.
We don't want to have to go, we don't want to have to take a vote.
Just be quiet, would you please?
You're going, you're going to have to take a vote.
So, but it does raise, you know, again, it, it raises the interesting question as to, you know, what is, uh, you know, what do we value in a budget? You know, because a budget is a, is a value statement, right? So what is it that we value? We don't value, uh, you know, communicating to the public, so we don't have a communications person. Uh, you know, so, and particularly when, when you have, you know, budgets where you, you need to start making choices, we may need to make choices all the time, but this was, this was, this particular letter was advocating for not replacing this position because of lean times. But you can make that argument for a lot of things, should we be spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a comprehensive plan? If we're in the middle of lean times? Should we be spending any money on a, on a, on a rail trail during lean times, right? So again, I mean, I think it raises interesting questions in how we do have these conversations and, you know, uh, and that's, that's the, I guess, what we sign up to do.
Yeah.
So, I just, my, my last comment, I guess, is, uh, you know, I think it would be, and we talked a little bit about this last time, about, you know, kind of these budget workshops, you know, and I think the board should be more engaged in, in that process.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that's one of the reasons why we're, we're trying to, you know, incorporate the board as part of that, but, yeah, I think, you know, certainly we, we welcome, you know, the input, but, you know, there are, you know, certainly, certainly perspectives that I think the board members, you know, can provide and should provide. But then there's also, you know, the, the education and the experience piece that factors into this.
Sure.
And, um, so I think, you know, it's, it's finding that balance and everything and it, you know, we typically haven't, you know, we haven't had too much of a discussion on the budget, basically, you know, for a number of different reasons. We have a lot of other things going on and so unfortunately, what happens there is you can't spend too much time on any one thing, which frustrates, I think, all of us, because I think we're all accustomed to doing things at an A level.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, this, this is going to be interesting because it is going to be talking about values and it's going to be talking about, you know, what, you know, what do we expect from people? And, you know, what do we want out of the community?
Yeah, well, and I, and, and I think, you know, historically, I, you know, you know, clearly one of your strong suits among many is your financial basis. And so I think we all respect that and we, we all, you know, know that what you're providing us is, you know, reflects, I think, our, reflects the board. But maybe we should take it another step and just get more engaged in that, uh, in that process at this point. And, you know, I know that you have, uh, you know, your department heads have a pretty big, uh, project to put together their individual budgets, I mean, you're expecting a lot from them justifying their, their budgets. And, uh, you know, I think that was always one of the things about being on finance committee was meeting with departments. And we don't really do that and, you know, uh, we meet, you know, I guess it's, it's, we meet them through, through your discussions.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, it, it's obviously balancing time, right? And, you know, what, what do we want to focus time on? You know, what, what do we not focus time on in order to do those things, so.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt, but make a motion to, uh, extend the meeting after ten o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, sorry.
Sorry.
Beat me to it, Joe, I was about to do it.
That's, that's my tune, thank you.
You're good, all right, on that note, um, Rob, you're up next.
Okay, you know, you may have the opportunity to go back to the finance committee, you know?
No, I think my, my, I think I found my home, my new home.
I'm going to cross off Starbucks Union issues off my board report based on earlier coverage. But, uh, yeah, the only thing I wanted to follow up with something that talked a little bit, uh, we've talked about is that, and this kind of segues from your, you know, the budget, the limited budget, and again, our meeting with Congressman McGovern just reminded me about the kind of temporary, but actually probably for the next few years, availability of funding, whether it's through this earmark, which we have to follow up on, our ARPA, our Inflation Reduction Act, infrastructure, that we try to look at that and figure out a way to use those funds best, whether, and it may be, if we can't use it to hire staff for various purposes under these grants, maybe get consultants in-house or, you know, a consulting firm that would kind of spend a lot of time here and help us, you know, get and use these funds, one of the big things we're, we've been dealing with for years as volunteers is the complications of the Upper Charles Trail, for example, and getting those easements. So maybe having somebody on board that could handle that administrative burden and help coordinate and get more grants and, you know, a variety of other things, so I just want to kind of renew that kind of thought, Michael, as you're dealing with these challenges, like how can we use these funds and get extra help? That was another theme that we're all hearing about, the problem, uh, the issues with getting people to get, help you do things and we know with town staff, there's a fair amount of turnover, look at the planners and the conservation agents and, I mean, you know, meet somebody and get to know them and they're gone and, you know, I mean, it's just, so maybe somehow, if not employees that you can keep for a couple of years and then maybe integrate to other funding sources or, you know, contractors or consulting firms to help us get through this stuff, you know, to get these projects going, Valentine Estate, take a little of the burden off you and Jen and the other people, you know? I mean, so that's something, I just want to renew that idea, that's my kind of thought for tonight, so.
Are you, you good?
That's it, yeah, I'm waiting for you guys to vote yes, let's go.
Okay, thank you, Rob, um, so I just have a few things, one, um, at our last meeting, we had talked about, we were talking about budget. We had talked about doing a tri-board meeting with the school committee and FinCom and, um, so I reached out to Lori Tosti, the chair of the school committee. They are meeting, um, March fourth to do their big planning session, so they won't have information from their administrators until March fourth, so she said that, um, like, after that will be a good time to do a tri-board meeting, because before then, they won't have any information to have a productive conversation about it. So, um, we had tentatively talked about maybe the following, I know time is kind of of the essence and there was some talk about maybe doing, um, something like either the second or the third week, like either the week of the sixth or the week of the thirteenth, um, as a tri-board meeting. Um, I know, Michael, you reached out to Scott, the chair of the, the FinCom, and they're talking about it next week, you said?
Yeah, about, about wanting, you know, the potential meeting.
So, but I just wanted to throw that out there as potential timeframes, um, and if there was any dates or conflicts that you guys were aware of so that we could plan around that.
I'm sorry, what, what are the dates you're?
The week of the sixth or the week of the thirteenth.
In March.
March, yeah.
So the week of the thirteenth, I know Tuesday night, I have a Mendez bill meeting, so I know Paul Kendall will be at that. Wednesday, we have a select board meeting and Thursday, we have a comp plan meeting.
Hmm.
So the week of the sixth looks.
Better?
Better.
Okay. All right. I think that could work.
Mm-hmm.
We'll figure it out with, um, I'll circle back with Lori and we'll hear from Scott too. So, did you give him any dates?
No, I just said it was going to be after March fourth, so.
But it's so many people involved, it's going to be tough to make a conflict in terms of attendance.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that it's going to be so late, uh, just.
I mean, yeah, March is late.
You know, the.
Budget perspective.
The barn, the horse is going to be out of the barn for the most part, um, but, um, yeah, I mean, we'll do what we can do, right? So.
This is going to be a fun budget year.
It'll be fun, something, it'll be something. Um, the other thing I just wanted to just let you guys know, so Michael and I are meeting with, um, Representative Lewis and Karen Edelman Foster this next week to just do a quarterly touch base.
It's next week.
That's next week, yeah, I know. Um, so if there was anything that anyone from the board specifically wanted us to make sure we got.
When are they going to get, when are we going to get them coming to our meeting?
So Karen Edelman Foster's working on dates with, with Karen, Jack was working on it and then Karen's working on it, so.
Can we say they should come together or we don't care?
So they will probably, they will come together.
They will, because they like to do that.
Uh, Representative Lewis generally votes on Wednesday nights, so he will probably be virtual, but it's really, um, Senate President Spolka's schedule that we're having.
It's a constriction.
That'd be great.
Yes, so, but we're, I've been following up with them.
Well, so the obvious thing that is this whole thing about the earmark and.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so we're still, yeah. Um.
I know they were close on stuff, but in regards to the earmark.
But, yeah, I would like to hear like what, what we're presenting to them as our priorities, other than that one. I mean, when Michael talk, I like to hear about or talk about what we think their priorities are, especially with, with Jack is always looking for ideas or, you know, things, so that's what I think would be important to, um, to hear back from you guys after the meeting, you know, what are we communicating and what do we think we should be or what's the, you know? And if they're like ahead of time, when is it, Wednesday, your meeting?
Friday.
So.
Yeah.
But, yeah, well, I mean, it, the last.
Two days, Friday.
So the last time we met, which was the first time we met, um, you know, we went basically through a lot of our priority projects and where we are with things and where we are with development and where we are with our, at that point, we were going right in, going into town meeting with a potential housing, um, moratorium, building moratoriums. So we were talking about that and the impact to the, to the town and, um, I think that was pretty much, I mean, there's, I don't think we have a set agenda per se, Jack was, Jack had put together an agenda last time. So if there's anything, like I said, anything specific that you guys want to make sure we cover with them, you know, let us know.
Yeah.
So, um, and the only other thing I wanted to just make sure people are aware of is that, um, people can pull papers to run for office, the town clerk's office, yeah?
When?
Um, I saw something out, out in social media land today, so.
I thought it was February more or less.
No, it's, it's like towards the end of.
It's early, I thought it was the end of, I thought it was the end of January.
Yeah, I think, I think that's normally when it is, but, uh, yeah, that's good.
Um, so anyone that is interested in running for office, go stop by the town clerk's office. Um, you need fifty signatures to, to get on the ballot and, um, run for office. I want to encourage folks to do that. Is there anything?
Yeah, they're now available.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. So unless anybody else has, um, anything else for the good of the order, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Roll, roll call vote, Greaves aye.
Mitchell aye.
Chair aye.
Mignone aye.
And Kinsman aye, so we are adjourned for the evening at ten oh nine. Our next meeting is the first Wednesday in February and we will see you all then. Thank you, very much. And we will see you all then. Thank you very much. Have a great night, everybody.
Good night. Good will, Joe.
Guys, have a, guys, have a great weekend. Great guys.